Good evening, citizens of Linden. Collegial Board members, staff, administrators of our Linden School Board of Education. Today is March 31st, and I will invite you to salute to the flag as we start this meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good afternoon to all of us. Madam Secretary, statement of adequate notice, please.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows: On January 10th, February 14th, and March 30th, 2022, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Here.
Ms. Pino. Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Dr. Berghammer.
Present.
Ms. Sintron.
Present.
Mr. De La Cruz.
Here.
Mrs. Fleming.
Present.
Ms. Gilliam. Mr. Rivas.
I'm present, thank you. Before I can walk on the superintendent's report, I would like to wave the floor to a counselor who will explain to the public and to the district the plans for today's meeting.
Sure, so for anyone who wasn't here on Tuesday or watching the video, the livestream on Tuesday, we were unable to conduct a meeting because we did not have a quorum. We were notified at the last minute that we were going to have a quorum. There were three or four members here, along with the administrative staff and the professionals, and we had to cancel that meeting. As a result, tonight, we're going to combine the two meetings into one meeting. We're just going to do one regular meeting tonight. We'll go through the agenda items and ask questions like you normally would at a work session, and then we'll just do the final vote rather than going through the formalities of opening and closing two separate meetings. All right, so it's going to be one regular meeting tonight.
Thank you for the clarification, Counselor. At this time, I will welcome the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rivas. Good evening, Linden Board of Education, administrators, teachers, students, parents, and community members. I'm very excited this evening because we get to recognize and acknowledge some of our wonderful and fantastic student athletes. And it's always an honor, a humble honor, to honor all students, but especially those that are doing extraordinary things in their chosen sport. So this evening, I would like to first start with our swim team, and I would like to call to the podium coaches Gelfand and Rotola. And while you are all making your way to the podium, we would like to acknowledge... and I'm going to ask someone to just... and I'll read from here. Thank you. Of course, we want to acknowledge all of our student athletes and the entire Linden High School swimming team, but tonight, we would like to shine a light on Lucas M'lanas. Did I pronounce that right?
Mikolinas.
Mikolinas. Lucas Mikolinas. If you're here, could you come to the podium, Lucas?
He's right with us.
Oh, there you are.
There you are.
Okay. So, in our monthly newsletter, you will be able to read about Lucas. He set four school records at the Union County Tournament, and he became the first male and the third swimmer ever to qualify for states for the Tigers. Lucas also set individual records in the 100-yard breast stroke and 200-yard individual medley. He joined teammates Gabrielle Ferrera, Philippe Salik, and Peter Jarzab to set the school record in the 200-yard medley relay, and teammates... I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. George Fletches, Salik, and Jarzab, he joined them to set a school record in the 200-yard freestyle relay. Please give this young man a round of applause. And the Linden Board of Education congratulates you and your teammates. I would call board members to the podium.
I'd like to say, we're proud of you, and I have to go and give you a hand.
And other board members that you would like to take a picture.
We are really, we are truly proud. Thank you so much.
Take a picture.
Take a picture.
Are you?
Let's get it closer here. Let's get it closer here so you don't... let's come over here closer.
Oh, come on.
That's terrible.
That's what they do best.
Next, I would like to call to the podium our soccer team coaches. I think I see Mr. Mastriano.
And that's a sport that I really enjoy.
Well, yeah, yeah. Your country as well is soccer.
I'm a soccer fanatic.
Yeah.
Yes, I think so.
I want to thank you for your commitment, and I would like you to tell the public how far along the boys' soccer team are. How far they need to go.
Sure. Absolutely. So, the boys' soccer team, we closed out our regular season 18-0. Our two losses came in both tournaments, in the county tournament and the state tournament. We made it to the second round of the state tournament after beating Irvington 5-1. We lost unfortunately to Scotch Plains 1-0 here at home. We had our hopes set a little further, but, you know, the season came to an end. The boys did really well, and we're really proud of them.
We're proud of them as well. We're proud of them.
Yes, congratulations, and thank you for your commitment. Are any of your players here?
They are. Some boys are right there.
Gentlemen, hold up.
So, our varsity team this year consisted of Christian Augusto, Dennis Belch, Brandon Campos, Joav Charas, Daniel Sapia, Brandon De Campos, Michael Granillo, Pete Yankovic, Stabon Lasso, Tyler Neves, Sam Nobega, Alex Nitch, John Paul Armento, Justin Pereira, Matt Pereira, John Remi, Daniel Restrepo, Matt Rubus, Christian Sarameno, Marcel Simon, Darryl Velez, and Anthony and Christian Zamora. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't say this, Daniel Sapia also scored 39 goals, which was top in the state this year. So, having the best of both.
You've got to look at the soccer team. People are probably putting their eyes on you.
Congratulations.
We beat them 11-1.
Okay, we're ready. Three, two, one.
Thank you.
What do we got next?
Last, but certainly not least, we would like to celebrate the Linden High School Boys Basketball Team. They made a memorable run to the state sectional championship game. The Tigers posted season... postseason included an overtime win over Ridge and an upset victory at Westfield. The LHS Boys grabbed a number-three seed in the state tournament despite playing their whole season on the road as the high school gym floor was repaired after storm damage. Please come to the podium. Coach Dreha, and as you're making your way to the podium, Coach Dreha, I have a special announcement. We have Coach Dreha, Coach Wade, and Coach Campbell. However, we just learned today that the Linden High School Boys Basketball coach, Anthony Dreha, has been named Union County's Coach of the Year by NJ.com. So you can go to NJ.com to read the article, which emphasizes the difficult schedule the Tigers played in and out of their conference, and how Coach Dreha used some early losses as lessons to help his team improve as the season went on. In addition, NJ.com also named senior Nigel Maryville to its third team, all Group Four, for the entire state. Congratulations on these amazing performances. And before I call the Linden High School Basketball Team up to the podium, Coach Dreha, do you want to say anything regarding this season and your student athletes?
Sure. First, thank you very much for having us here tonight. I really appreciate it, and the honor of being named Coach of the Year in Union County. But I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my two assistant coaches that really put a lot of effort and work into everything we do. And I was hoping, and I texted these guys earlier, when that came out, I was shocked. And I wish their names would have been right there next to mine, because they put just as much work as I do, if not more. So I'd really like to give it up for Coach Wade and Coach Campbell as well.
It is an honor for the board to provide you with all this recognition for basketball players, which I see there in the back. Please come on here, boys. We are very proud of you guys, and I said in the locker room, you are heroes, you are champs.
Thank you, appreciate it. There's a few members that are not present tonight. This weekend, we have, there's a lot of travel basketball going on, and it's opening weekend for a lot of travel teams, and they're going to be playing in front of colleges, Division Two colleges this weekend. So if you guys missed it, missed tonight's ceremony and honoring because of that, they got practices and obligations with these other teams. But tonight, we have here, or I'll go through the whole roster. BJ Bowser. Steve Cardy. Chelsea Dunn, who is our manager this year. Steve Dorville. Franz Eugene. Christian Garcia. Jett Guerrero. Richard Giant. Jalen Hodge. Nigel Maryville. Elijah Motley. Hashim Nadir. Emmanuel Okoro. Elijah Butler. And Naz Robinson. Just one last thing, if you guys don't mind. We have some other players that got All-Conference as well, so I'd like to acknowledge them. First team was Nigel Maryville for All-Conference. And then we had three other players, Christian Garcia, Elijah Motley, and who am I forgetting? Naz Robinson. They all made honorable mention.
I wanted to say that, I said it in the locker room, guys, and I keep saying, you are champs. You really make Linden proud. Thank you. Thank you for everything that you do. Let's join us for a picture. I think I see one of your biggest fans, the major is here. He likes basketball as anybody else. I remember he was the one saying, we need to go to the final, we need to support him.
He got it wrong. Not one of your biggest fan, your biggest fan, okay? Nobody knows. This is a team that nobody gave a chance to do anything. Coming out of the previous year, everybody said Linden was this, Linden was that, and everybody, no one gave you a chance. And all you did was make us very proud of you, because you showed that you can compete with the best of them. And Coach Dre, you know you're the Coach of the Year. As we say, Dre is in the house. Congratulations to you all. I am so proud of you, I really am, and I'm just looking forward to next year. God bless you all.
Let's join us for a picture.
Ready? Three, two, one.
Linden!
Ready? Three, two, one.
Linden!
Chief work, chief work, it's the dream work.
Okay, I'm not in church. There's a meeting.
About to get, I'll have to go get an ice pack.
Want somebody to bring you a bag of ice? Is it on the cafeteria?
No, Joe will bring me one. We take a little break.
Do you want to read my report all the way through? You want to go after I read this or before?
Yeah, probably.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, after, probably everything.
Okay. Glasses. Once again, congratulations to all of our student athletes. We are extremely proud of your hard work and commitment. Continuing on with my superintendent's report, on Tuesday of this week, students and staff throughout the district were excited this past Tuesday to welcome my friend, Darryl "DMC" McDaniel, of the legendary rap group Run DMC. Darryl spent over an hour at School One, excuse me, School Four, talking to third graders as well as visiting students from Linden High School and McManus and Soul Middle Schools. He talked to the students about his children's book, Darryl's Dream, and using education to make your dreams come true. We shared video from the event with every school so all students could receive his message. As the assembly, after the assembly, Darryl went to Linden High School for an hour-long sit-down interview with TNT Student News, which will be available tomorrow morning for everyone to view. Thank you to Darryl for his generosity and to all of our students and staff for giving him a warm Linden welcome. I want to say thank you, and I believe our board president is also going to acknowledge the hard work of our students, not only at Linden High School but around the district, who took part in our sit-in for peace earlier this month to support Ukraine. Our students did a wonderful job organizing this peaceful demonstration and supporting their fellow students who are from Ukraine. Also, thank you to everyone who donated efforts at the high school and School Eight, who collected relief supplies for Ukrainian soldiers and refugees. Also, congratulations to students from School Number One, who recently took part in the ESTEM Engineering Challenge at NJIT. The group of five students created a small wind-powered vehicle over seven weeks, then traveled to the college campus for a demonstration and oral presentation about their project. The team was led by acting principal, Mr. Walters, and technology teacher, Kimberly Bachman. The five students were Scarlett Munas, Eddie Olivera, Amina Turner, Jason Julian John, and Diego Jimenez. Congratulations to you all. Students at all of our elementary schools, as well as McManus Middle School and the Academy of Excellence, were delighted that they got to spend a week caring for eggs and chicks that hatched in their classrooms. Children learned about how to care for eggs and keep them warm, then got to hold, feed, and water the chicks as they began to grow. Thank you to Ms. Cindy Apelinski for organizing this project, which is funded through the generosity of Ifinium USA. I was also happy to attend the musical performance of "Once on This Island." I know President Rivas was thrilled to also be in attendance that evening. If you weren't lucky enough to be there, you missed a great night. Mr. Duane Cosby and his students did a wonderful job. At Soul Middle School, they recently got a visit from gold-selling recording artist, Naya. I was able to stop by for one of her performances when she sang her songs, "Stay Strong" and "Spill It," which she performed for the students. Afterwards, Naya discussed her uplifting messages for students. Naya is also the wife of teacher, Mr. Eugene Napoleon, over at Soul. I would like to share some unfortunate, sad news with the Linden Board of Education as well as the Linden community. We are deeply saddened to learn of the death of Laura Masters. Laura Masters worked for the Linden Board of Education for six years. Ms. Masters was a part-time school aide at School Number Two. On behalf of the Linden School District, we offer our most heartfelt sympathies to her family. Our thoughts are with you and your family during this time. And I would like to announce a few retirements. During last month's board meeting, I missed this young man's retirement announcement, and he will be sorely missed. That is, I'm referring to Mr. Leighton Sams, the head custodian at Linden High School. Mr. Sams started in 1998 as a reporting custodian for the Linden Board of Education. Throughout his 20-plus years, Mr. Sams has worked at Schools Five, McManus, and Soul Middle School, and Linden High School. Mr. Sams, thank you for your passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best. Enjoy your retirement. And last, but certainly not least, Bernard Tracy, who is the district's security officer. Mr. Tracy started in 2005 as the Linden security officer for the Linden Board of Education. He has served the district and students and staff of Linden High School by always putting safety first and security at the forefront. Thank you, Mr. Tracy, for your passion and dedication to the students and families of Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best. Enjoy your retirement. And my last presentation for the Linden Board of Education, I am going to turn it over to our assistant superintendent, Mrs. Denise Cleary, and she is going to share information and data from the school safety data system, reporting on the first period of this school year, 2021-2022.
Thank you, Dr. Hazelton. I'll stay here just so I have the mic and everyone can hear. The board members, you all have a copy of the presentation at your seats, and it's also projected here on the screen. It is required by the state of New Jersey for us to report any acts of student safety, that any incidents of violence, any incidents of HIV, or other infractions that can occur in any of our schools throughout the school year. We must report on this publicly twice a year, and this report tonight is for Report Period One, which encompasses the time period from September 1 through December 31 of this school year. So if we go to... oh, and I have the clicker, right? There we go, okay. So if we take a look at this, this is... sorry. Broken down. Last year, when I did these reports, it was basically zeros across the board because we were in the virtual mode for most of the time. I don't know if that was me. We were zeros most of the time because we weren't in school. Just towards the end of the year, we had a few HIV incidences, and that was because of some of the social media instances and cyberbullying, things like that. This year, being in school since September, we do have a few increases, not so much at our elementary schools, but if we look at this across the board, we can see that School One just had three incidents, other incidents, which could be simple disruptive behavior, maybe not paying attention, disrupting in class, minor things like that, small infractions. One HIV that was alleged but not confirmed. School Two, we had one incident that constitutes violence. That could be violence, it could be a fight, it could be vandalism, it could be substance abuse. Those fall into the bigger category, weapons, and usually that's a fight at the younger levels in regard to that. They had one instance. Four other incidences, one HIV alleged during that report time, and none that were confirmed. School Four had zero across the board, Five was zero across the board, Six, zero, Eight was zero. At School Nine, there were three incidences reported of the violence vandalism, and at School Ten, there was one HIV alleged. Now, if we move over to the next slide, which is our secondary schools. So from September to December, at McManus, there were two incidents reported of violence vandalism. There were 18 other incidents, three HIV alleged, and one of those alleged HIBs were confirmed. At Soul Middle School, there were nine incidents of violence and vandalism, six other incidences, three HIV alleged, and one of those alleged HIBs were confirmed as well. And at Linden High School, which, remember, encompasses over 1,700 students, we had 22 incidents, violence vandalism, broken down, that substance abuse falls into that category also. 408 other incidents. I know that number seems quite large, but that could be anything from missing a Saturday school, to cutting a class, to repeated offenses of missing detention, that falls into that category as well. And there were zero HIV alleged or confirmed. We also need to report on what are the programs that we have in district to address HIV, to address bullying, to address character education. So every school has to report in what types of programs they do. And these are some of the programs that are listed that were done during that time period. We have Peer Pals, Leader and Me, and this could be unique to a school, or it could be in several of our schools, but these are just programs throughout the district. Peer Pals, Leader and Me, character education programs, we have our Anti-Bullying Assemblies, PBSIS programs. During October, we have our Week of Respect and Red Ribbon Week, School Violence Awareness Week, where we have various programs for the students. We conduct our Parent University Workshops with different topics for parents to attend in the evenings. Soul Smart, IRNS is our intervention and referral services team, and that is to provide interventions and services for students who are struggling. We have leadership and mentoring programs. We have our Education on Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Review, which is reviewed with our staff and students all the time. Staff training, groups, meetings. This year, we started our Celebration Days, which is part of this, and we also have our superintendent's student advisory committees. Now, I know we did just start the kickoff Tuesday with... That could be violence, it could be a fight, it could be vandalism, it could be substance abuse. Those fall into the bigger category, weapons, and usually that's a fight at the younger levels in regard to that. They had one instance. Four other incidences, one HIV alleged during that report time, and none that were confirmed. School Four had zero across the board, Five was zero across the board, Six, zero, Eight was zero. At School Nine, there were three incidences reported of the violence vandalism, and at School Ten, there was one HIV alleged. Now, if we move over to the next slide, which is our secondary schools. So from September to December, at McManus, there were two incidents reported of violence vandalism. There were 18 other incidents, three HIV alleged, and one of those alleged HIBs were confirmed. At Soul Middle School, there were nine incidents of violence and vandalism, six other incidences, three HIV alleged, and one of those alleged HIBs were confirmed as well. And at Linden High School, which, remember, encompasses over 1,700 students, we had 22 incidents, violence vandalism, broken down, that substance abuse falls into that category also. 408 other incidents. I know that number seems quite large, but that could be anything from missing a Saturday school, to cutting a class, to repeated offenses of missing detention. That falls into that category as well. And there were zero HIV alleged or confirmed. We also need to report on what are the programs that we have in district to address HIV, to address bullying, to address character education. So every school has to report in what types of programs they do. And these are some of the programs that are listed that were done during that time period. We have Peer Pals, Leader and Me, and this could be unique to a school, or it could be in several of our schools, but these are just programs throughout the district. Peer Pals, Leader and Me, character education programs. We have our Anti-Bullying Assemblies, PBSIS programs. During October, we have our Week of Respect and Red Ribbon Week, School Violence Awareness Week, where we have various programs for the students. We conduct our Parent University Workshops with different topics for parents to attend in the evenings. Soul Smart, IRNS is our Intervention and Referral Services Team, and that is to provide interventions and services for students who are struggling. We have leadership and mentoring programs. We have our Education on Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Review, which is reviewed with our staff and students all the time. Staff training, groups, meetings. This year, we started our Celebration Days, which is part of this, and we also have our superintendent student advisory committees. Now, I know we did just start our, the kickoff Tuesday with Run DMC was the kickoff of our My Brother's Keeper and My Sister's Keepers program, but that's not on this list because this was not in the first report period. So when I report out on this again for the second report period, those additional programs will be added. And that concludes the student safety data report. If anyone has any questions?
I have a question. Good afternoon.
Yes, Mr. Rivas.
In regards to the HIV confirmed cases, what is the protocol that we follow in order to find a corrective action plan for these cases? A correction action plan for the HIV confirmed cases? It looks like we have two cases that were confirmed.
During that report period.
Yeah, what is the action plan?
It could vary depending on the case. And you have a copy of it each of you receive at each board meeting. I don't know what I did with mine. It's the green right there, it's the different cases, and it will say whether the students were counseled, whether there were consequences imposed. So it depends on the nature of the incident and what the findings are.
When you mentioned that other incidents in that category in the high school, 408 incidents seems to be high, but remind us there's about 1,700 students on it. What is the difference between, let's just say, this year and the prior years before COVID? So we can have some type of understanding what the difference is. I'm only trying to make a reference or something.
Yeah. I don't have those numbers on hand, but I can get them for you. But I would say probably other incidences prior to COVID with, and once again, these are things like cutting class, missing a Saturday school. It could have been maybe they cursed in a classroom and they received an infraction. These are things that probably would have been close to 1,000.
Close to 1,000, so we are less than what we used to be before.
I am going to double-check those numbers because I don't have the previous numbers in front of me, but I can go back to my previous presentations and see.
That will be a good thing to hear.
I will send that to everyone.
Less is better.
Yes.
I have one question I'd like to ask regarding serious incidents of violence, vandalism, and weapons. Dr. Hazelton, one of the things you mentioned previously is that your concern for our students be getting arrested and being incarcerated.
Present a pipeline.
Of this 22 in the high school, do you know how many of them actually, what happened was so severe that they actually had to be taken away by police and?
I cannot give you all 22, the background story for all 22. I know of some situations. I can get a, I have numbers, if that helps, I do have it broken down. But also, not every one of these would have been a police intervention. It depends on the situation. So out of those 22, we did, 12 of those were fights between students. Three were substance abuse, where a student was found to be under the influence. Two were assault, one was a threat, three were weapon, and one was damage to property. So that's what falls into that higher category.
Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback. When you mentioned weapon, it gets me a little concerned. What is considered to be a weapon?
In these two cases, I believe there were two during this report period, two were knives, and one was, I think that's this report period. I don't know if it was that. Those are coming up. But it was a tobacco product. I think there's a, it's like a cutter for tobacco products, and a student had that out, but that is considered because it's a cutter.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know it's for another day, but I am sure that eventually you will come and, because I know you still have something that you're working on for security.
Yes.
Safety. So I know at another day, you would bring us a complete analysis of what you plan to put in our schools to make our students safer.
Absolutely. And conversation, an ongoing conversation, as I mentioned in my superintendent's report, Mr. Tracy is retiring as our head of security, which we're going to miss him, but it gives us an opportunity to really look at that position. How do we expand it and grow it to scale so that we can cover all of our schools, not just the high school?
But seeing that most of our incidents are occurring in our high schools, leave me to wonder if our security system we have in place right now, is it adequate? Or do we have to make some changes or modification to our present program? Because no parent want, every parent, when they send a kid to school, want to know that that kid is safe.
Absolutely, you're absolutely correct. And we are reviewing safety protocols, and we have made some adjustments, and it's ongoing. We started with a security firm. We requested that they come in to do a security analysis, and during the middle of that process, the people who were sent here left the company. So it's like a comedy of errors where we're going to have to secure another company. However, we have looked at rearming the doors, the side doors. To my understanding, they had alarms on the doors already, but they were silent alarms. We want audible alarms on the side doors. Children should not be entering and exiting through the side doors or letting in people from the outside. So we want a system that, once those doors are triggered, everyone will hear it and they will know. So the last, on the last agenda, the board approved the purchasing of some of those upgrades. So it's an ongoing process, and I will continue to update the board.
Any of these, the serious offenses that have gotten higher school suspension, any of them repeat offenders? Do we know?
For that HIV report?
Yes.
I can find that out for you.
Well, my question also in total is, for those repeat offenders, obviously, whatever punishment they're getting is not strong enough because they keep on doing it. How many times do we have to take it or let them continue on this? Mr. Garcia, if I'm getting out of line, just let me know, okay? Because I know there's laws protecting, and obviously, the students. But if they keep on doing the same thing over and over again, how many times do we have to take it before we expel them from school?
It depends on what the offense is, it depends on what the history is, right? It's very fact-sensitive, like we do with staff. You know, we tend to employ a system of progressive discipline with our students, right? So a first offense is, we're going to obviously be a little more lenient. In the second offense and so on, we're going to be less and less lenient. But again, it's fact-sensitive because there are some offenses that are so egregious, right, that a first offense is going to be enough for us to explore, you know, the most harsh of punishments right off the bat. So it's hard to answer. I can only answer these questions by speaking generally, right? We can't speak about individual students out here, but it's hard because they're so fact-sensitive.
Okay, that's good.
Just to answer your question, I'm just thinking of what you said before, repeat offenders. And I just remember back in the day, and probably Denise can probably, she was up to high school too. What we did one time, we actually did it for two years in a row, is that I had freshman kids, and freshman kids are the most, they had the most amount of discipline of the three, of the four grades. And what we found out, by October, by the end of October, 85% of the kids were the same 30 kids that were doing the same offense. Like the same kid was getting cut in Saturday school, the same kid was being late, the same kid was getting thrown out of class. And by the end of October, it started to trend. And what we found out is that if your freshman class was like, say, I'm just throwing a number, 450, okay? Of those 450 kids in their freshman class, okay, and you had certain, by the end of October, we had a list, we kept a, 30 of those kids, around 30 of those kids would be the same kids that would do 85% of the discipline every day. You'd see the same kids, day in and day out, day in and day out. And as the grades progressively went to 10, 11, 12, those numbers obviously became a little bit less. Because as the kids progressed toward maturity, if you want to try what's called at maturity, those numbers were less. But freshmen would always be the worst, but you would find out. And even probably if you went to your sophomores and your juniors, and, you know, you'd find out, the numbers would be lower. But by the end of October, beginning of November, you'd see 80, 85% of the same kids doing the same things time and time again. And that was very frustrating, but, you know, what do you do in a situation like that? It's not like, you're not spread out with 100 kids. It wasn't that, it was never that. Most of the kids were pretty good. They didn't, but it was the same kids doing the same things over and over again. Okay, just to answer that, okay?
No matter what happens, right? Even if you got to the point of expulsion, right? You still have to provide that child with a fair and appropriate education somewhere else. But if, I'm bringing this up because if someone is a threat to themselves or anybody else in the school, we're obviously going to get them out of the school immediately while we figure out what's going on and what the appropriate action is. So I guess to answer your question, how many times? If it's serious enough, we're going to get them out as soon as we have an allegation. We can investigate it. If those allegations are sustained, then we're probably going to place them in an alternative setting if we think that they're a threat to the safety of our students, our staff, or the efficient operation of the school.
Good, thank you.
I have two questions.
Yes.
The first one is with the middle schools, as far as with McManus and Soul, and then the high school, Linden High School. How many security guards are in each one?
It's Cleary? It's Cleary? Oh, I'm sorry. At the, at McManus, we have, at each of the building, at both middle schools, we have our special law enforcement officer, our SLEO, okay, which is part of the security at the school as well. And then there's two at the high school. And then at McManus Middle School, we have three security staff. We have two male, one female, and then the SLEO. And at Soul, we have three, we have four. We have four security and the one SLEO. The high school, I believe there are 10 between crisis intervention and security, and then two special law enforcement officers.
And how many students are in the high school in total?
The high school's about 1,750, I think, as of today. It's close to 800, yeah. It's always give or take, yeah.
Okay. And my second question is, what was the point of the silent alarms? Like what was the reason for that? Why weren't they audible?
I'm just going to say, if we're going to discuss anything that is in any way going to compromise our security or the safety of those schools by speaking publicly about the way we keep those buildings safe and secure, I would ask that we have that discussion in closed session. I don't know the answer to that, I'm just trying to get it out in front of.
I think a safe answer without giving too much information, silent alarms for the evening. If someone entered the building, it would trigger alarm to the police station or the person that monitors. So to prevent someone, we would be notified when someone entered into the high school after hours.
After hours, okay.
So it would trigger a silent alarm. And I can, I will find out. That is just my educated assumption at this point, why it was silent and not audible.
Thank you.
If there's no more questions, Superintendent, anything else for your report?
No, sir. That concludes my superintendent's report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Following our agenda and being that we're doing both meetings at the same time, I'll try to.
Minutes?
Yes, I'm going to try to go through the body of it, and I would like to ask any of the board members to make a motion to approve approval of minutes.
I motion for approval of minutes.
I second.
So just to ratify what it was motion, I ask for a motion to approve minutes of the work session held on February 22, 2022, at the regular meeting held for February 4, 2022, and the copies of those minutes are in your hands. Mr. De La Cruz, your motion for that?
Yes.
And Dr. Binghammer, your second.
Yes, I second.
Any discussion before, we can call a roll call. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Stayed.
Right, well, thank you, and we'll continue with our agenda. And we're going to now ask for our education report.
Ms. Cleary.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. The Education Committee presents the following recommendations to the Board of Education for approval. Number one is the enrollment of students in out-of-district placements. Number two is the termination of students in out-of-district placements. Number three is the payment for related services as per child study team evaluations. Number four is the termination of related services as per child study team evaluation. Number five is the request to accept a classified tuition student from another district for placement in Linden Public School District with a payment of tuition. Number six is to terminate a one-to-one paraprofessional in an out-of-district placement. Number seven is the adjustment of tuition as per the NJDOE audit for some of our special education out-of-district schools. Number eight, our amendments on past education reports. Several of those are dates, change of account numbers, or addition of expenses that were omitted for some student and parent programs. Number nine is to approve a course for a student for graduation requirements through ediscere. Number 10 is to grant permission for various use of facilities, dates and times listed by various administrators throughout the district. Number 11 is to approve a date for an activity, our ROTC naval ball. Number 12 is to approve district field trips. 13, we have the approval of training for district staff. Once again, combination of both virtual and in-person programs. Number 14 is to approve professional development activities in district. All of those are paid through title funds for our teachers. Number 15 is to approve curriculum writing for elementary math and some of our CTE programs at the high school level. Number 16 is for Title I after-school program at school number two. Number 17 is to approve our summer remedial reading program for our special education students this summer. Number 18, we are recognizing and congratulating two of our top seniors at Linden High School, who will be honored with a Union County Recognition Breakfast. Number 19, in this agenda, we are naming and congratulating our Governor's Educator of the Years in their respective schools, and at next month's meeting, we will bring them forth at the board meeting for a recognition event. Number 20, we are doing the same for our Governor's Service Professionals of the Year in all of our respected schools. Number 21 is to accept the Student Safety Data System report, which I just presented to you for this Report Period One. Number 22 is to grant permission to apply for the Week of the Young Child event grant. 23 is to submit an application to the county superintendent to establish an additional preschool disabled class at school number two. 24 is to grant permission for school number one to operate within a Title I school-wide program for next school year. 25 is to prepare and submit the annual school plan for Schools One, Two, Four, Soul, and McManus Middle School. This is Title I funding. 26 is to prepare and submit the ESEA grant for the 2022-2023 school year. 27 is to grant permission for the mentor organization to provide technical assistance for our staff mentors in the My Brothers Keeper and My Sisters Keeper program. 28 is for the 21st Century Program to enter into a contract with Rutgers Health to provide services for our secondary students, and that's through our grant money. 29 is the readoption of the ESA documents, the parent involvement policy, school-based parent involvement policy, and homeschool compact for next year, and that is for all of our Title I schools. 30, 31, 32, 33, and 34 are additional approvals of costs for refreshments for some of our title programs. When these programs were originally submitted, the costs for refreshments for the parents and students were omitted. So because it's title monies, we have to have this accounted for. So this is for their cost of refreshments for these different events. 35 is to adjust our school calendar to reflect when we close schools early in December, December 22 and December 23, and that was due to the spikes we were having with COVID at the time. And that leaves us with one snow day left, hopefully, and we will use that as a give-back day. So the last day of school for students will be June 23 instead of June 24. 37 is the approved superintendent's determination on HIV incidences that were presented at the February meeting. And 38, next week, we will be proclaiming, starting Saturday, the week of April 2 through the 8th, as Week of the Young Child, to be celebrated within the Linden Public Schools. Do we have any questions?
Before I can open the forum for questioning, I would like to ask the chairman of the Education Committee, Madam Leonard, if you have any report about the committee meetings, when you discuss many of these items, or what can you present to the board members?
Well, we didn't have a committee meeting. Yeah, we did, we did. Yes, we did have a committee meeting. And I have a couple, I have a couple of questions I want to ask. On 13, on item 13, 9 and 12. Listen, I am not against training and development. I know that, you know, you've got to keep growing and you've got to keep learning. My only question is on 9 and 12. Before we start sending people out of state, do we ever look to see if some of these programs are offered, the same programs are offered online?
If they are, this one here.
The conference, yes.
Yeah, this is the global contract, conference.
Yes.
And this one is not virtual. This is an in-person conference. It's IB, and every year it's held in a different place in the nation. So it's very limited.
Okay, so this one is.
Yes.
The next one I wanted to ask is on number 14, item number 14.
Oh, I, okay.
Yeah, item number 14.
Yes.
We have data supervisors and ESL bilingual supervisors. They are paid a lot of money. Why are we hiring outside source to interpret ESL scores for report of instructions? Why are we not using our ESL coach and supervisors to do this?
They are a part of this as well. WEADA is the organization, and we did discuss that last time. WEADA is the world-class instructional design and assessment institute, and they govern the standards that the state of New Jersey follows, and that's what we work through. And even so, sometimes we do present it. We are able, through the title funds, to bring them in. We have title funds, and that is designated for professional development. So this is one of the things that we use it for, to bring in the actual presenters from the organizations to do that.
Was any of these particular items discussed on the committee meeting?
Yeah, they were all discussed on the committee meetings.
Were they giving an answer? So this is the follow-up of that question?
This is a follow-up on the questions that, you know, we asked. It is just that I just feel that, you know, we are very top-heavy, and we have a lot of supervisors and coaches that are making a lot, a lot of money. And I still find that we still have to go out to seek outside help. Whereas these people supposed to have the skill, the training, and the skill set to be able to do the work that we have, to be always looking for outside people to do.
And it's, there are oftentimes, too, that we bring in the experts. I mean, there are renowned people who are experts in the field, even with data analysis and everything else that we learn from, and all of our administrators learn from every day. So in combination, we bring them in. It doesn't mean our supervisors and our lead people will be sitting in these as well, learning along with their staff from the experts from that organization.
So what type of training you have specifically? You know, we on the outside looking in. So there's a lot of stuff I'm sure you guys do that we are not aware of. So what type of, you know, I haven't seen much about what the supervisors themselves are actually doing, the supervisors and the coaches are actually doing for our teachers.
Okay, I did, after we had our last meeting, I did send to the committee our professional development learning series that we were presenting. And that was the booklet. We had, I think there was almost 30 sessions that were in that booklet after school. And if you look in that, our world language supervisor is presenting along with the teachers on Saturday sessions. There are after-school sessions that many of our coaches are presenting. So that's what they do. They go to certain workshops that are held by the experts, and they come back and they turnkey that information to our staff and district as well.
And Dr. Bergheimer, if I can share a story with you. Yesterday, I did a learning walk at school six to observe one of our math coaches to see exactly what that person's day looked like. So part of her responsibilities, one is to help our new teachers. So I watched her present a model lesson in the subject of math while the permanent teacher, who is a first-year teacher, looked on. Our math coaches, they model best practices, and they also meet with our teachers during common prep periods to go over student data, to answer questions about the curriculum. So they provide additional layer of support. We always have to remember, although we all are educators, we're lifelong learners. And so everyone from the superintendent on down is required to attend annual professional development in order to maintain our certificates and to also stay abreast of the latest and greatest in educational trends.
I must admit that I taught some of, I taught some of the schools, and I was very impressed with some of our math students using numerator, denominators, and they actually were able to, you know, interpret and understand, understand how math works. I was really impressed with what I saw in our elementary schools, you know? And I just hope that it should, what we do is that should be in all our schools, you know? If one school is doing well, one student is doing well, and ninety is doing bad, then we are failing.
Oh, yeah, there should be continuity.
Yes. I hoped that, as you said, there should be continuity, and my accent, forgive me. And I just hope that all our students grow and learn together. It is my hope.
And I agree. Thank you.
Just going to add, before I continue, is anything else you want to report for the committee meeting?
No, that's fine, yes.
Any board members?
Yes, I have two questions. Dr. Hazelton?
Yes.
Can the board members do one tour with you later to observe one of the coaches or no?
I would have to check because it's an observation. We do walkthroughs, but you, I'll get back to you. And I'm sure the LEA, there are some parameters, but we can walk through classrooms. I believe we cannot stay longer than, is it 10 minutes? Yeah. So there are some parameters. But I've walked, I encourage all of the board members to just reach out to me, and we'll schedule a walkthrough through any school that you would like to visit.
No problem. And I have a question on 15, which is our elementary mathematics. What is it that we are writing? Are we rewriting everything, or are we adding, taking away?
So we are currently looking into a new math resource for grades K through 5. Within the mathematics department, there is a committee that has gathered together, and they are vetting different resources to look at, to make it more, put more continuity from elementary to middle to high school. So once we have the new resource, which they are still looking at right now, once we have a new resource and it's board-approved, then we need to start working on revising the curriculum with that resource. So it's not a complete revamp, but it's just aligning it and putting things out.
Because today I was looking through some numbers overall, and I was quite disturbed with our math numbers in Linden, because I ended up popping, and every year for the past, I think, six years, our math scores have declined overall. And that's concerning to me. Okay, so that's why I'm asking, since we're rewriting the curriculum.
Yes.
Is that the, okay. Thank you.
I have a question regarding number seven.
Seven?
Excuse me, Ms. Gaylord, you provided us the information. Did we ever find out how many students were in the Duran 1 for Union, New Jersey?
Ms. Thomas?
Here we, yeah.
My apologies. Is this better, everyone?
Yes.
I said number seven, the Duran 1, Union, New Jersey. Did we ever find out how many students?
Yes, yes, I do have that. And I said that Duron 1 was a total of four students. Duron 2 was a total of six students. And what I did explain in the email is that we receive, Ms. Gaylord could share this with me, we receive a report from the state. It's an auditor's tuition report, and it lists every single out-of-district placement school in all of the districts in New Jersey. And after the auditors come in, they look at what they were charging, and they make the adjustments. And then they give basically a final school year over/under of what that would be for each student, and then whatever that may be. Now, some schools, it's only $252 over, so that means every student who went there would be charged that extra amount in the adjusted tuition. Some schools, it's over $2,000 per student. So it depends on the school, and it depends on the audit findings by the state. And then they just multiply it by the student, and then it's also prorated by, for how long the student attended. You know, some students might not start until, let's say, they're placing an out-of-district placement in November, so their amount would be prorated from November to June and not from September to June. Thank you. And this is the total for all of them? Yes, total for all the students, yes.
All right, I guess it's my turn for questions.
I had a question before you go. You'd like to go last.
Go ahead.
I just had, actually, I think I have a couple of questions here. I think they were answered, never mind. Please excuse me.
Okay.
All right. There is one thing that I want to just make reference. In the education report, month over month, we have questions about almost the same thing. And I come up to the conclusion that is because this is what most of the report is. So if we don't have questions about what most of the report is, we might not be doing our job. So yes, we're entitled to ask questions. So I'll thank everybody who asks questions over there. And we continue to ask the questions about things that they might not make people happy because we're asking. But it's concerning that yet, this board has not been shown a clear process of how these decisions to send any one of our students or administrators is to be taken. So for orders to us to be more enlightened on how these things are, because we are going to continue to have questions every time something is in front of us, and it shows that we have people attending these development classes, which by all means, they're needed. But I have a question, because we have been debating this situation for a long time ago. I'm going to have a specific question. I remember the last, the first and the last time where we were having a big debate about sending people to training and going to go to an IT conference in Atlantic City. It was to all to this board, the people were going to go to that conference, and I come back, and I'm going to share the knowledge. The right question is, what have we have done since that time up to now of those persons who went there and were supposed to come and share the knowledge? How many sessions have been held? How many work sessions have they held to share the knowledge on this conference? Why can't you inform us of any prior, in this particular incident, the IT conference?
The IT conference, okay. I can get that for you, because I know that there was presentations done at faculty meetings at different, to the staff in the building, and also at some of the department, I know, technology. So I can, I don't have that at my fingertips, what exact, what was presented.
So now, a presentation, considered training?
Yep.
Presentations of what they went to a conference, is considered training development for the teachers?
For the teachers, yes.
Yes.
On Mondays, principals meet with their staff for about an hour and a half.
Yes.
And there are a variety of professional development opportunities that take place during that time.
But that is something that happens every week, every Monday, with every current week. I'm talking about the specifics. And this board continues to be concerned of all the administrators and the teachers that by all means, they need to go back to get that development, but we keep telling, we keep being telling that they're going to go back, and they're going to come back to share the knowledge. We want that knowledge to be shared, and as you said, I would be looking forward for some of the report, how are these people coming back to share that knowledge? Because that's what is being told to us. And we don't know, because we don't run the day operation, we don't know where they go. But it would be interesting if we see those reports, because as again, we are going to continue to discuss this thing, because this is part of our agenda. And the agenda is where we come and ask questions. Now, I have a question regarding a development that it has shown here to be in July.
What number?
I'm going to look at it, yeah. It's number 20, number 1327. This is a virtual training, English and literature in July.
What number?
Number 27 out of item 13.
Page 11. Twenty, page 11, okay, thank you.
July.
Twenty-seven.
Or in March. Is there any, I mean, I know people have to prepare themselves and get ready for this. This is after the school year. What can you provide me more information?
This particular training is IB training. We are training an additional teacher to teach IB because of, just of the change in scheduling for next year. So we will have an additional teacher for backup for, that's an IB English class, the literature class. And IB courses are not given in New Jersey, the majority of them. This one, the teacher will be doing it virtually over the summer. So she's prepared for September.
Similar to that, I think I saw, and I'm looking at it, a training for the principal of high school in July.
That is the International Baccalaureate Global Conference.
That is item 12.
Yes.
Page nine, I'm sorry, item 13, item 12 on page nine.
Yes. That is Mrs. Hore and Mr. Faschetti, who is the IB coordinator, have requested to attend that conference. And once again, every summer, International Baccalaureate has a global conference that's hosted, and everyone from around the world can come to this conference for IB training for the future years.
Now, the reason that they're in July and they're in March agenda, is anything special or is it just pre-planning purposes?
It's pre-planning for registrations and things like that, yes.
Board members?
I have one last question. Dr. Hazelton, you know, just like Mr. Sam, I'm very, I am extremely data-driven by student outcome. Because I look at all students, this is, this, from the time they get up and they get dressed to go to school, it's showtime. There's no do-over. So we've got to get it right, and we've got to get it right the first time. Regarding our math, I would like to know, because Sam is right, in the last six years, our math scores have not been improving. It is declining. And I want to know, I see that we are revising our math. And I know, of course, it's because we want to see changes. But my question is, is what outcome, what data that you have used, what student outcome and student data that you have used that will show that using this new math program or the revision in our math program will help move our student, our, help improve math scores for students? Why did you select this one?
Well, curriculum writing is guided by the New Jersey State Learning Standards.
Yes.
So those are published by the New Jersey Department of Education. As I have discussed with the board and the community, students in New Jersey have not taken a state assessment since 2019. So when you say for the last six years, the math scores have been declining, your last math score, your last state math score is from 2018, because it reports the previous year's data. So close to half of those students are no longer even in the district. They've graduated. I did a report maybe for, about three or four board meetings ago. What we've been using, we've been using growth assessments. We also shared with the board the Start Strong data. That was the baseline assessment that the state mandated that we provide to all students that was given at the beginning of October. And if you recall, we talked about the way the data was presented. It gave us percentages on students who needed more help, minimum help, or no help at all. So as far as the state assessment data that you are referring to, that's 2018. More than likely, those scores are probably somewhere still the same. Because of COVID and other things, we know. That is a phenomenon that we're seeing across the country that is not just Linden. But I answered your question. So every year, every school district has to look at their curriculum and revise it being guided by the New Jersey State Learning Standards. So it's not Dr. Hazelton or anyone else selecting a program. It is the supervisors and directors looking at the New Jersey State Standards, anything new that's come down the pipe, looking at our curriculum and seeing where there are gaps, where that we have areas of weakness, and revising that curriculum.
So is this a new? So is this a new curriculum or is this, is there any school out there in this, in in any county out there in New Jer- Jersey that is using this math curriculum right now and is having good results?
There is no district in New Jersey that has taken a state assessment for me to say, this district, District X, they've improved their math scores. That data is not available anywhere.
So bottom line is, we don't even know whether or not what we're doing right now will change our.
No, I would disagree because these guidelines are set forth by the New Jersey Department of Education. So it's.
We still don't know.
I don't think anyone.
We still don't know.
I get your point. Because you don't have any current data to say District X is using this curriculum and they have seen their state assessments or it's not there because they haven't taken any state assessments. However, we use other measurements. We use, like I said, growth assessment, we're using Edmentum. We use data from the classroom that includes classwork, formal tests, informal tests that students take and our coaches and supervisors work with the teachers to analyze that data. But if you're looking for a mandated state assessment that tells you where your students are, it doesn't exist because they haven't taken one.
And then my last question is that we could go to the next one. Because this is new, we are looking at a three to five years or to see whether or not this work or not, or how long would you be able to take?
Well, any dramatic change takes three to five years. This May, when our students sit for their first state assessment, you will use that as your baseline. That is your starting point now. That is the new baseline for every district in New Jersey. And then next May, 2023, then you can start comparing. We, we know we're comparing growth to see if our children are on task throughout the school year. This May, 2022 and May, 2023 is when you can make a valid comparison. Because everyone's sitting for the same test in every district. And then at that point, you can start comparing Linden to the other districts in New Jersey.
I got to piggyback in that question. How about our math coaches? What type of training or developing are we offering for them? What about, are they being part of this plans to improve our math scores? Please let me know, what have been the latest development that we have provided for our math coaches or for our people in the math department?
Our math coach, I'm sorry.
I want to, before you, if you recall, board members, we hired, you approved two outside consultants. Dr. Dehan, she spoke to the board a few months ago. So she has been working with those coaches and those teachers going into the schools. So we're not pulling teachers out. We do not have to cover classes with substitute teachers. We also have a second team from the DOE and they're currently working with which grade, grade bands?
Let, I think last week was secondary, but they've done several grade bands and they meet every Monday, a different grade band. And that's people from the DOE, once again, doing professional development with our coaches and our teachers.
So essentially, we've gone right to the source, the New Jersey Department of Education that oversees all of the districts and we've asked for help and they've sent hopefully their best and brightest to help us with professional development. I'm sorry.
That's, that's exactly what I was going to say.
What this might means is that our math coaches are not up to par to what our schools need?
No, I wouldn't say that. I would go back to, we're all lifelong learners. You know, everyone here should have a mentor, including the superintendent, because things are always changing. And children, there are different modalities of learning. And we continue to grow as we expect our students to grow. We all need that ongoing professional development. Once you graduate any type of teacher prep course, that's not the end. You are continually going to professional development. You should be going back to school and taking classes to ensure that you're at the top of your professional game.
So before, Mr. Matucci?
I said this for years, and please tell me I'm wrong. I don't think I'm wrong, though. And and I see a couple of math teachers out there, and I've always taught the elementary math teachers. And I want you to correct me. I think, and I'm not an element, I was never an elementary teacher. But I have grandchildren right now, one is six and one is four. One's in first grade, one's in pre-K. And I believe, and someone told me this once, is that a child should be able to know how to add, subtract, multiply and divide, simple four mathematical things by the time he's in, she's in third or fourth grade.
That's true.
I agree with that. Because if we always remember, how did we learn math? Go back in the day when you were kids, how did you learn math? You learned it, it was back in my day, it was like repetition, but you had to know how to add, subtract, multiply and divide. And what happened, I was in Seoul, I'm going back, my God, it had to be 25 years ago. I had a math teacher tell me this. A great friend, Eddie Esposito, he was a great math teacher. He was a seventh grade math teacher and he always said to me, Greg, give me a kid that can add, subtract, multiply and divide, and I'll take him anywhere in math. So he was teaching in seventh grade and he said, these kids can't add, subtract, multiply and divide. So I, what I, what I did is when the kids were coming into sixth grade from middle school, I mean, from elementary, they were after fifth grade, they're coming into sixth grade. In October, what we did, I I had the math teachers in sixth grade give their kids four, I was, I think it was 40 addition, subtraction, multiplication, division questions, simple things, simple math, forty of them. And just, and what we found out is that when they were in sixth grade, when they were in sixth grade, 60 to 65% of them did not do well on it. So what I'm saying, okay, where's the breakdown? Where is the breakdown? Because what happens when people, when kids, you know it, when math, when a kid doesn't learn the basics of math, then he gets into middle school, then he gets into Algebra I, then he gets into eighth grade. The time he gets into high school and he can't add, subtract, multiply, divide in a, in a great way, where's he going with geometry and where's he going? He's not going to ever learn math. So what do they do? They hate math, they get frustrated. And people always say, well, I hate math. Well, why do you hate math? Maybe you hate math because you never learned the math. And it is frustrating. But I, I just think, I always said this, and maybe I'm, tell me I'm wrong. I really believe math scores are, the breakdown comes somewhere around third or fourth grade. I mean, I look at my, 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 my grandchild, he's in first grade. But I said, Bodhi can do his two times table, he can count from, he can subtract. He's in first grade. But it's repetition, I see how they teach it, the repetition. But what I'm saying to you is that, and I'm, I really believe, I maybe I'm wrong, but that's where the breakdown is. Because if you never learned math in third and fourth grade, if you can't add, subtract, multiply and divide, where, the, the further you go in your education, you're going to hate it. Why are you going to hate it? Because you don't understand it. And when you get into seventh, eighth grade, there's no way going back. You can't go back anymore. And I think that's where I, I, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm, I'm out of my head. But I just believe it's basic. I just think it's simplified to the point where the time a kid gets to third or fourth grade, he should be be able to add, subtract, multiply and divide. And that's not being done, that, the breakdown is there. Now my question comes, why? What are we doing wrong here? I don't know. But that's, I really believe this and I believed this for 20 to 25 years.
So following that great comment, that's what I was going to. Before this board approved for this company to have an assist math, we got presentation here that shows us that many of our high schools' students that graduated last year and the year before during COVID may have very much deficiencies in math. What other type of development training have our math teachers and coaches may have had that you can remind me before what we have done? Because we're talking about all this training and development and math is a very important part of our education. We talk about how important IT training is, we important, how important every other training is out there. We have been dealing and and discussing how is it that our board members get paid so much attention on who is going to training or where they're going to training? But let's discuss about, please remind us, before we hire this group of people to come and help math, having math coaches and assistants, what type of training that you may recall of development have they have gone in the last eight months, 12, 12 months? Because the, the reality is that this board continues to ask, what is the process that we use to select training and development for our teachers? We want our teachers to be developed, but we want everyone to be developed, especially in subjects like math. You said it, you, you are an educator, you know exactly what, how it is. I, I cannot tell you that you're wrong, but we need to pay attention to these minor things. We're talking about sending people to development all over the country, spending all this money. Perhaps we're forgetting about math. Oh, we didn't forget about math because we hired a company to come in. And I'm, and I'm being, I'm being ironic right now, please forgive me, indulge, indulge me. But, but the reality is, we have to look at those basics. And I don't know, is anything that you can provide us, any development that we have sent our coaches or math teachers in the last 12 months besides what we have hired?
Yeah, I, I'll get a list of all of our math PD that we've had.
And a, a question for Mrs. Clary to maybe for the edification of the board. For item number 15, can you just give a brief overview, overview, excuse me, what will take place during these hours and and why they are needed?
The curriculum writing, okay. So this is the time that, so once this is posted for the curriculum writing, we will do a posting for it. And then teachers will apply to work on the curriculum writing. Usually it's a teacher of that grade level. And and that's what it is. They go through the entire curriculum with a fine-tooth comb, making any adjustments that they have to in regard to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. And then it is put all into our curriculum portal that we use for the district throughout our course.
So just, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Bergheimer. So this is not a comp, I, I.
No.
Said that, and I, I want clarification. So it's not a company, this is just the subject. So it's not like a company elementary mathematics. It's not a company, it's, it's the subject, the content area.
You know, when I was a little girl, when we were in, I grew up in Trinidad and Tobago. And when we were in first grade, we had to all recite the timetable, right? So by the time we were like eight years old, we knew the timetable, we knew how to count, we knew how to multiply. When, while I was walking the elementary schools, I saw in the eyes of all those children the desire to learn, the hunger in their eyes. And I, I just believe that we have a missed opportunity in front of us. Where we are not, we are not capturing the dreams of our children. We are not building them the way we're supposed to. We, the best opportunity to create a good foundation for our children is between grades one and four. If we, if we really are able to to capture our children then and teach them foundational math, teach them foundational reading, we wouldn't have problems in middle and high school. Our kids will be excited to learn, they will be more confident in their belief, to believe in themselves. I think we need to start, start back at the beginning and spend more time with our babies, teaching them how to read, how to write. I guarantee you, every child in the first and second grade would love to get up and recite the timetables. They would love to do because they want to do it. Maybe I am old school, but I still think that one-on-one was two when I was a baby and one-on-one is still two today. And the way you learn math then is the same way you learn it today. We need to go back to the basics and teach our children. Because I have worked in college for over 20 years. And the most saddest thing to see is to sit with a parent with their child who they have all the hopes and dreams for that child to just finish college. And I see the tears in the eyes of that parent because I have to tell that parent, your child ain't ready. We have an opportunity, my, my people, my teachers, my citizens of Linden, we have an opportunity to make a difference. I'm not saying we're not doing a good job, but it's always better and best. And we have to look for the best in each and every one of these students.
I, I concur and I'm going to continue to express my wishes and the wishes of many of the board members who have spoken to me, that we want to support our teachers. We are here to support them and we're here to make sure that you have all the tools that you need in order to teach. And that is our goal, that is, that is what we plan. But at the same time, we need to ask questions and we need to ask questions. Why? Because we need to understand what, what's, what's happening? What is the breakdown as you, as you, as you mentioned it? Because we don't run the school, but we run a meeting and that's the time when we have the questions. And, and that's the reason why I ask. But one of the things that I, I want to ask, it is not agenda-related. But this is the forum when I to ask, and I need to ask is something to do with the education. I, can you give me some information on why would a student in high school will think that the cosmetology program was going to be taken away?
Why a student would think that?
Yes.
Okay, because at the time, we're projecting changes for next year with possible changes with the freshman academy. And there were some of the electives that were going to be eliminated within the course guide. So that was the reason why. So at the first instance, yes, the cosmetology program was, it was mentioned that it was going to be phased out.
But would that, without us trying to phase out programs, shouldn't have be a some sort of a study or, or see the impacts or, or see why is it needed or who is going to affect? I, I am pretty sure that we have childrens attending these programs that we cannot just say next year, hey, you're not going to have it and you are luck. So what, what type of, what type of studies or process were taking in place in order to start thinking that way? And I, and I have to ask because this is the forum where we ask.
I.
Well, it was moving to Union Votech. It was, so that was the.
Yes, we, we were in conversations with, I was in conversations with Union County Votech because they do have a cosmetology program. So if we were not able to accommodate it here because of changes, that our students could take the program over there.
And that would have, that would have cost the district perhaps money and transportation? That would have, that would have cost the district perhaps money on hosting our students in another places when we have to think about, this is a Linden, we need to host them here. And it is that the only concern that a student may have? Should this board know about any other programs that perhaps that we're thinking to be eliminated? Because the reality is, parents are worried. But the last people that want to be worried about their education are the children. And the children are contacting us on the email saying like, how can this happen? I, I have to be quite honest, when I got that email, thank you, Dr. Hazelton for handling it. I, I followed the change of processes that we have, we have established. And Dr. Hazelton gave me the answer, I was able to answer the children. But it really made me concerned, who's, how we making these decisions? Why are we making this decision based on what we're making this decision? And perhaps some of the, what was not shared with the board? So food for thought. Any other questions about the educational report? Yes, go ahead.
Well, is 30 hours enough hours for the curriculum writing?
Ms. Clary, how do we come up with 30 hours?
Yeah, that, that's just been over the course of time, averaging out what it takes a teacher to, to go through that curriculum. And that's a number that's been come up. We use standard for 30 for a rewrite of curriculum. And then if there's minor revisions to be made, then we do it 15 hours.
Okay, so the other part of the question was about the cosmetology. And that would be classrooms, that would be, I think, on the next report, so I'll save it for the next one.
We'll save it for the next one. Any other question before we can entertain or ask for motions to have these items approved?
One last question.
Yeah. Since we were on the math, I myself have a child in elementary school, middle school and high school. And as far as with the math learning, I'm noticing that when they come home and they want to do their homework, it's, it's a different learning technique. And I myself would have to Google it because I learned it, like you said, Dr. B, the, the old, old school way. So is there a way to like help the parents that help their children with their homework? Show them a guide that this is, this teacher is teaching their, their child. show them a guide that this is, this teacher is teaching their, their child, the student, a certain way of like, let's see, like, please excuse my dear Aunt Sally, see, like, I'll say that to my son, and he's confused, and I'm trying to explain to him how I, I learned when I was younger, so versus the new version of how they're being taught. Because I find that as a parent very frustrating.
Parent universities are important, and I am right there with you, because the way I learned math, and when I show my son how to do math to arrive at the same answer, he tells me that's not how my teacher does it, and you're wrong, the answer is correct. So you know, the new math, and then they phased in Common Core, and now Common Core is phased out, you have next generation learning standards, why we need to send our teachers to professional development? Because every cycle, there's a new and improved way to do math. And I agree, rote learning, you cannot move forward if you don't have the basics of multiplication, subtraction, and addition. And I think children retain that information best through rote learning. However, there are other people that disagree.
Any teachers?
TOEs, Department of Education, they, they disagree about rote learning. But some things you have to, sight words, they have to be memorized.
Just want to piggyback, when my daughter was in first grade, and it's a prime example, September she came home doing Common Core math. I'm trying to teach her my regular math, and I did not know what the heck I was saying. My daughter looked at me like I was confused. She said, you're wrong. And then we had a meeting in January, and this is before Dr. Hazelton, explaining some Common Core math. I go, how do you tell a parent in January about Common Core math, and in September you're teaching it, and I can't explain that to my child? And I know one, one plus one equals two, she's telling me 10 different ways to get the same answer. That, that was mind-boggling to me.
Can't teach your children.
Try that with equations, with fractions.
How many teachers do we have going to training?
A parent may have not had a headache out there.
How many teachers do we have going to, for training for math?
In this agenda, none.
In this agenda, or overall?
Sure, both.
Well, trade, professional development for teachers is ongoing, whether they are going out of district or whether or not they are receiving professional development within district. As I mentioned earlier, our math coaches, they meet with our math teachers. Right now, we have coaches that are split between schools. The ideal situation would be to have a math, a dedicated math coach at every school. And so we continue to work to see how we can do that, either through the general fund or through grants. But PD, professional development, not only in math, but in all content areas, the professional development is ongoing. And it's required by state law. What are the mandated hours that professionals need to have each year?
120 for mandated coursework.
You a teacher, math teacher? You're a math teacher? Are you the only two math teachers here?
Ball member, Ms. Fleming?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The meeting, I appreciate that, but the meeting is among the board members.
All right, so any other question about the agenda before we can...
I have one, one thing I would like to say, and we could end. I would, listen, I can't imagine we getting rid of a cosmetology class, beauty always sells. And regarding our building, I believe that we do need a new building, but what I envision is a STEM building, where we could have robots and great training, futuristic training for our students. All our buildings are old, and everything is old, we do need something new, but it should be, it should not just be walls and, and, and a basketball court. It should be where we have a tech, we teach in tech, we teach in beauty, we teach in all the different future training that our young people who don't want to go to college could do it right here, as opposed to just a building. This is what I believe.
Thank you, Dr. Berghammer. All right, as the chairman of the committee, can you please propose the agenda items for vote?
Yeah, I know, I'm going to read it now, yes. Yes, I'm going to do it right now. I'm going to have it right in front of me, move it. Give me yours.
Yes, right there. I'll give you the whole thing.
The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of school and the assistant superintendent, present the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approve items one through 38. And I respectfully request a second.
Second. There is a motion on the floor for the educational report being second. Any discussion before we can proceed with roll call? With no discussion, Madam Secretary?
I thought you said roll call, I'm sorry.
If no discussion, simply roll call.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Sintron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Reavis?
Yes, thank you. And that will conclude our educational report area of the meeting, and we will continue accordingly to the package with our finance report.
Finance agenda, items one through five are the regular business of paying bills, paying staff, and making sure all the accounts are in the black, meaning we're not in the red. Number six is accepting the ESER funds. We discussed the ESER funds in excess in our meetings. This is the breakdown of where all the different grants are combined, accelerated learning, summer learning, comprehensive behind the school day, and New Jersey-tiered health. Seven is accepting funds from the State Department Development Authority for emerging capital needs. Number eight is accepting funds for the New Jersey Association for the Education of Young Children grant. Number 15 is, I mean, number nine is the amount of money from the New Jersey Department of Agriculture for the SNAP grant. Number 10 is acceptance of funds from the Institute for Disabilities, Cerebral Palsy Association of Middlesex County. Number 11 is accepting instruments from the people as listed to school four. Number 12 is a donation of supplies for school number four from Staples. Number 13 is approving a contract for the renewal of the following IT software that we're currently using. Number 14 is a contract with Bismarck Corporation for the addition and renovation of Linden High School Academy based on the low bid received on March 8. Number 15 is a contract with MAP International for cafeteria equipment for McManus and school number one, based on low bid received March 8. Number 16 is a contract with Teal Management for asbestos abatement for the Linden Academy based on low bid received on March 23. Number 17 is approving a contract with MAFI Security. This is the security equipment that Dr. Berghammer was, I mean, Dr. Hazelton was talking about for the high school. Number 18 is Xerox Corporation for the leases for the buildings as listed. Number 19 is a contract with OnCourse for the educational student information system. Number 20 is the application to the New Jersey Department of Agriculture for our summer food service program. Number 21 is to renew the addendum with Pomptonian for the food service operation for the summer. Number 22 is acceptance of an out-of-district student from Raway based on a tuition. Number 23 is also tuition for pre-K student. Number 24 is surplus, and number 25 is approving payment to the attorneys for an ongoing legal matter with the Board of Education.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gaylor, board members, questions? Oh, I apologize. Before I can go to questions, I'd like to ask for the chairman of the finance committee that are during the committee meetings, if it's anything that was discussed or anything that has been clarified that you would like to share with the, with the board members.
I would always like to accept funds, that's my favorite part. However, the spending of the funds is, I'm a little confused on, because it kind of overflows to, you know, this overflows into buildings. So if we decide, like Dr. Berghammer says, we don't want a basketball court, we want a STEM building, then we should not approve this, is my correct?
Well, as, as a board members, we are here to discuss the items, and then we will vote on what we will feel if it's mostly in protect, protecting our childrens of the district, so.
Right, so my question is, let me, let me rephrase that, because I probably didn't say that right. So let me try that again. So if I don't want a parking garage and a basketball court, and I think that I could spend $11 million on, you know, more classrooms for our kids so that we can keep things like cosmetology or, or any of these other programs that set our students up for success when they finish high school, that they don't have to go to college if they don't, you know, everybody doesn't go to college. So there has to be some ways to approve extracurricular or, it's not even extracurricular, just learning for their future, so they can provide for their families. And I, I'm wondering, I'm sorry, I'm rambling, so I'm wondering, number 14 is, this is for the renovation of the Linden High School Academy building. Can we renovate the high school academy building that's already standing?
So let me try to...
And put, instead of a parking garage and a basketball court, put an actual two-story building there so that we can have, because we're out of, out of spaces, like we pay over a half a million dollars to house, to school children, you know, somewhere else, and I'm just, we're out of room, so.
Let's discuss that. Let's discuss that among ourselves to see how we can get to an agreement on what is that this board thing will fit best for our district. So let's discuss that. So let me just piggyback on what you just, you just said. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the information that we have received from our business administrator and from everybody in the district in order to, to keep us informed about the project. It looks like this goes dated to 2020, perhaps a little before.
That was the approval?
The approval, right? So let's just say maybe before the approval got in, this idea of getting our children's an academy started it or was created. For some of us who may have not started in the conversation of this particular project, I believe if I understood correct that the, the intention behind this on previous boards was to make sure that our high students are safe, and there's information that some of them got struck by vehicles in this particular road. So within this particular safety and secure idea, the project was created, it was going through many different phases of approval. You all should have received all the phases of approval that they providing us. And on the committee meeting, it did a presentation for us, right? Presentation that everybody here and the public may see about the renderings and the designs. Many of the board members had questions during the particular presentation, and throughout the information shared, I can just recite you some of the amount of monies that we have spent already to, before we have come here to this proposal of approving it. We have provided the city of Linden $640,000 for trees on the property. We have spent almost $631,000 on architects' designs, drawings. I really should have studied math to go to an architect business. Environmental for Nginacres, $60,000. Environmental for construction, $18,000. Well, everything is averaging a pre-construction cost, pre-construction cost, right now, money that we have spent, $1,350,000. This is an investment made by this district in order to present us with a plan on what it is believed to be something best for our children. Now, we as a board members, and since board member Ms. Fleming asked, we have in our agenda an item, which is item 14, to approve this matter or not. It is important for us to discuss it on what our ideas or, or understanding of the project is, because we need to think not only for now, but we need to think for the future. We need to make sure to understand that, I think with the exception of mine and Mr. Martucci, none of you may have heard about this project before. And I, and I heard this project in 2019 when I took oath into my chair, and part of the project was still in process, so it was not anything finalized until later this year, early this year, something like that. I don't want to personally say that the idea behind this project was bad, but it was good then. I don't know how good is it now, especially for something that Mr. De La Cruz presented during the committee meeting. So I, I think this is a very sensitive subject, and I would like to ask all of you to spend some time, a little of the time, as much time is needed, to discuss how important will this be for our children. Dr. Berghammer, you have mentioned we want a facility with more classrooms, we want a facility where we can teach our children vocational career classes. We, we, we just recognize a basketball team here for the, for the amazing job there is, and I have to say, the mayor says that they're, he's the number one fan for the basketball thing, and with all due respect for the mayor, he will like basketball, and I like basketball, but I can't build a basketball field for $12 million. I'm sorry. I personally want more classrooms, I personally want more opportunities for our childrens to be educated, and if the concern is safety, and we have been told that the public officials at in the state and the county have not allowed us to do an overpass before, maybe we should ask to go back to them again. Because there is no reason why we can not look for the safety of our childrens, asking the public officials out there, who are supposed to be looking for the benefit of everyone in our communities, to approve a pass, an overpass to avoid this issue. Now, there is a great idea, we don't want the childrens to cross the, this street, we need to look for options. The high school was built in 1925, it's going to be 100 years old. Many of our buildings are all out there, and they are in poor conditions. I personally feel that we should spend this money wisely, or come back to this project in a different way.
I agree.
So that is my comment and my opinion, and I need to ask for a business administrator, what was the time that we went and the governments said no for an overpass? Do we have any type of a letter, data, rejection notice, or anything like that that we can validate, and we can go back and say, in 1999 you told us, no, we cannot construct on this highway, or something like that, that we can go back? Because politicians come and go, and maybe those politicians there are not here no more, and we can go and influence there that we need something to prevent and keep the safety of a student. Do we have something?
I don't know if we have the specific letter, but at the time, Joe Soliga, who was the state senator who was killed in a car accident, was fighting on our behalf in order for us to do an overpass, and we were denied because it's a wide-load street, and in order for the wide loads to get from South Jersey to North Jersey, St. George Avenue was the only street they can go on. They can't go on Route 1, they can't go on the parkway, they can't go on the turnpike, and we were, it was rejected by the government at that time.
Do we have a rejection notice, a rejection letter, a formal request made? I mean, because I have to say, I can be the senator of New Jersey, and somebody can ask me, and I can go out there and say, hey, I did everything that I could, and they say no, but without a formal request, the senate will not even hear it. So do we, do we make, do we recall making any type of requests to the county, to any of the officials, to the politicians who said that they are here for the city, or for our children? Do we have anything in our records?
I don't have a specific letter, but...
Well, I didn't hear the question.
If we have anything on our records.
I rejected for putting the overpass, the kids to walk over the highway.
It was a state highway, you weren't allowed to do it.
I know.
Senator Saliga, we tried that.
We don't have a letter, so.
They sent the letter.
So let me just say, let me say what I asked, let me just say what I asked the question. If there is no proof that I have gone through anyone to ask for something, it hasn't happened. I understand and I'm going to respect everybody who had gone through this time before, but if it's not something that I could go to the state of New Jersey and say, you're putting and risk the safety of the children of Linden, and they go, so what are you talking about? You have not made a request. We had, as a district, we may have not even requested. Now, state highway, we're talking about state highways. 109 is a state highway. There are overpasses, many of them. It's a state highway. There are overpasses.
Right.
And what could it make a difference to 109, to St. George Avenue that is in the middle of a city? I don't know. I'm not a subject matter expert of that. But what I think we need is we make the formal petition. It looks like we haven't done it. Or if we try it, it was all word of mouth. And this board, we would like more.
It was done through the city, unfortunately. Both people that were fighting for us are dead now, so we don't have the information. But that's fine. You can, you're the board.
So whatever, we have no proof of that. Any other members have any questions?
President Rivas, regardless of whether or not we have a formal written notification of denial, you can always.
We apply.
Make a request that they look into this again.
Correct, correct. I just wanted to make sure based on what it was.
Presume that Mr. Martucci, Ms. Gaylor, right, that this was, this came from the State Department of Transportation, but I don't know if the county planning board has to look into it as well. It's certainly something that I can assist with in any way you'd like me.
I appreciate it, Councilor. The fact of the matter is that this board wants to be informed, and we need to be informed, and we need to ask what had been done before. So this is the reason why we're inquiring about it. But yes, regardless of what had happened, and I have said before, those politicians may have come in and gone, maybe the people that were opposing, and they may be thinking that things have changed. Things have changed, and what was good in 1990 or 1999, it's not good no more, so we need to perhaps go back for that. So I think that in my personal opinion, as we discuss this item, I feel not, not good spending this money for a gym and a parking lot.
Well, I have, I did a little homework from our special meeting to approve the budget and the presentation they gave us for the class that I was very vocal in. I did a little homework, and I kept on saying, we're getting a parking lot and a gym, we already paid $1.3 million to get a parking lot and a gym. No classrooms. Now, today I hear we may lose cosmetology. So, okay, so now we're not adding classrooms, but we're taking classrooms away, we might deduct classes. I did a little homework with, and my concern was that we're not looking into the future, we're looking at today's numbers, in another five to 10 years, this city, the way we're building buildings and the way we're growing, we have no extra classrooms, but we're going to have a gym and a parking lot. So I got numbers for the past five years that I asked Dr. Hazleton to give me of our enrollment, and believe it or not, the only year that we went down is actually this year an enrollment. Last year we had 6,300 students, if I'm correct, and this year we have 6,000 students. For some odd reason, we don't know what transpired because of the COVID, we don't know. But historical data, I printed something else out that I was looking, from 1988 to the year 2021, our historical data, and you guys can look it up, it's on schooldigger.com, okay? I think 2009 was our highest high school, Linden High School, where we had almost 1,900 students, and I think the lowest point was 1,600. And today's numbers were still at 1,700, if I'm correct, and I'm still saying that we're going to go up in numbers. As a matter of fact, and the proposal that was approved in 2020, we have 6,200 students 2019 to 2020, and 2024 to 2025, 6,300 students proposed, so we're growing still. So by the time the building is done, that means we're going to need more classrooms, and we're trying to be safe for the kids not to cross St. George Avenue, because this year we had an incident that two kids got struck on St. George Avenue, and we understand that. But I don't think we want to wait until somebody gets killed crossing that street to say that we need an overpass. Is that when the politicians are going to wake up and say, we need an overpass? And that's when they're going to approve it? We know it's a wide body, yes, but the wide bodies are not that wide, that they're not taking all sidewalks with the IT that we have, the advancement that we've come in technology, I'm sure they can build something that will house a bridge. And if we have, we already paid for that land, we have to build more classrooms, we need to build more classrooms, okay? Because I say in another five years, these numbers are not going to be the same. And we are going to grow, and we're growing a lot. We have buildings that haven't been finished that are still being built, and these buildings that are here now have not been included in these numbers. And I don't think it's going to be only a family, a husband and a wife, or anybody else that is not going to have kids. More than likely, they're going to have kids.
Well, Linden has becoming a city that everybody likes.
Hi, let me just run you, let me run you guys some history, because a lot of yous weren't even born when I'm going to tell you right now. First of all, back in the 60s, Linden High School was grades 10, 11, and 12. The only junior high school in this town was Soul Middle School. I want you to follow me in this, okay? Now, in 1982, the educators of the state came up with this middle school concept. They said sixth graders shouldn't be in elementary school, ninth graders shouldn't be in junior high school, ninth graders should be in the high school, sixth graders should be in the middle school. So what happened is that Linden High School, when built, was designed for three grades, 10, 11, and 12. When I graduated, we had 575 kids in our senior class. There were 1,500 kids in that building back then. Fine, when they put the freshmen up there in '82, '83, and moved the sixth graders to the middle school, okay, the high school became technically overcrowded. It was, and then across the street, what used to be there, which half of yous weren't even born when it was there, that was a vocational school. Kids who didn't want to go to college would go across the street, and you'd have a regular auto mechanic room in there, you'd have a wood shop, the electric, electricity, everything else was there. So kids, and then in their junior and senior years, I think Mr. Muti was there, and then those kids would get programmed out into the, into the trades, and it worked. And then what happened? A lawsuit happened, big gigantic lawsuit, back in, what, 70s? With the vocational school in Scotch Plains, because they said, okay, look, a couple of parents wanted to send their kids to the vocational school in Scotch Plains. And there was a big lawsuit. Linden lost, because what happened is they turned all of that out and made that into what's there now, computers and things like that and everything else. So that whole vocational thing went out. But what I'm saying is that, now, when I keep hearing a gym and a parking lot, it's a school. Whoever put that misnomer out in saying that, you are absolutely dead wrong. Whoever's spreading that around this city, it's a school, like School One. This is going to be a freshman academy. You're going to have freshmen go from eighth grade to that building. It's a school. It's not a gym. You have to have a gym. Here's School One. This has to be here, or this place can't operate, as any elementary school. So when I hear people putting this stuff out there that's not even close to being the truth, I get a real problem with that.
You are entitled.
No, I'm not done yet, because I'm getting, really.
You don't have problems, Mr. Martucci.
Carlos, now let me just say something. Carlos, and what I'm saying to you is that land-wise, I know this city like it's my own backyard. We have no land to build schools.
Because we're giving it away to the buildings.
Listen to me.
That's why.
Don't argue, just listen.
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying this fact, we're giving it away to the buildings.
I'm giving you history, man.
The history is not here, what we're dealing with. We're dealing with the reality, Mr. Martucci. It's not history here.
If you don't want to listen, you want to kill it, you're doing itself, it's just an injustice to these kids.
But I don't want to kill it.
You talk test scores, you talk, you know, putting the freshmen in their own house, but if you don't want to do it, fine. And you're going to keep that building the way it is, fine. If you have kids, you're doing such an injustice to them, but you know what, I'm going to be long gone, you do what you want, but this is a decision that you're going to have to live with down the line, because you're going to look down five years down the line and say, oh my God, what did I do?
Thank you for your comment. Thank you.
I agree, but I don't want to kill it. I want them to redraw the plans and add classrooms, don't take classrooms away. That's the problem. There's not enough classrooms.
There's going to be classrooms there.
Basketball courts behind the schools.
It's a school, it's going to be a school.
I understand that. So redraw the plans with the gym and more classrooms.
It's in, it's in the, am I missing something?
The whole purpose of this, the whole purpose of this, Mr. Martucci.
The classrooms are there.
So that the kids didn't cross the street. However, you're not thinking about the entire day. So when the kids get up and they go to the ninth grade, they don't all live on that side of town. They're going to have to cross the street to get to school.
We're talking about them having to cross the street between periods.
That still doesn't change, Dr. Hazleton, the fact that we cannot, we cannot just think that we're building to avoid people crossing the street. The crossing the street was still going to happen.
No, I agree with you on that. I'm talking education here. I'm talking education.
If we're thinking about education.
The street is part of the equation. I agree with that. I agree, that is part of the equation. But I'm talking education here.
Can we put railroad track, just pretend there's a railroad line there and just put those big arms down or something?
I can guarantee you, when we talk about education, it will cost us less than $30 million to have a lobbyist go to the New Jersey Senate to get an overpass, and we can fix that problem. What happened is that when this project started it, a long time ago, it was thought one way, many people in this board do not agree with it, and that is the right that any one of these board members have. And that's as simple as that. You can tell us history, you can tell us anything that you believe, you can tell us what it was when 1960. We're in 2022, and we're going to continue to go forward to the future, and as Mr. Sam De La Cruz said, we need more classrooms and we need to feed more people in this building. So if we have to go back, redraw, and come back and said, let's look for the best usage of that space, so be it. We have waited five years, six years, can we not wait three or four extra months?
Wait as long as you want.
It looks like we have spent all this money without having any of these board members including the conversation to come here today and said, we need to approve it, because we're ready to construction. At least that's not my point, I don't know about the rest of the people. Any other questions regarding this particular item? Questions? I want to ask questions, not necessarily comments, because in comments, we can stay five hours here, and we need to respect our public, and we need to respect each one of others.
So why can't we have two high schools, a regular high school and a vocational high school? Our schools are crowded, we have 1,800 students in one building. Why don't we have?
Who can answer that question for the district? Ms. Gaylor?
Dr. Berghammer, we had that.
I know, but that was years ago.
That's what it was.
Yes.
At the time, the board and the administration decided they didn't want a vocational school anymore, they wanted to make it a more robust environment with technology and science and whatever. And then they went to court against the, with the, against the vocational school, because the vocational school claimed we weren't really a vocational school. We said we were really a vocational school, and we lost. And they decided that we wanted more robust electives for our students. They didn't want cosmetology, or sewing, or cooking. All those things were brought up in the original planning phase, they wanted more robust electives. The only classroom you're losing is cosmetology. The life skills room is going to go over to Academy of Excellence. But this is your decision. But also, there was a plan, a plan, a phase two and a phase three, which was to renovate the second floor, put in STEM labs. They wanted to put a STEM lab in this, but they said no, because ROTC didn't want to move from their space, so they didn't want a STEM lab put in the ROTC room. There was a lot of planning, there was a lot of time, but it's up to you. You don't like the plan, fine. So we just wasted $1.4 million of taxpayers' dollars, because you're going to start from the beginning. We have the property, but you're going to have to redo the whole plan. And that's your decision, and that's fine, and saves me all the work.
And thank you, Ms. Gaylor, but that was not part of the answer, she was just asking you about what was, we cannot build a student now, why we can spend or waste money, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Will you ask for the history?
President Rivas.
Any other, any other member has any questions?
President Rivas, are we able to put this item on hold or for another time?
I, I cannot make the decision of anything, the decision is made by the whole board, and if at any time anybody wants to put this on hold, that is the decision of any board members. I can only share my opinion. The plan as it is does not work. So putting it on hold is just to keep discussing something that is not going to work.
I would like to make a motion to vote no.
We can, now, until we go to the whole, the whole agenda, to the whole agenda. I know that you may be ready, but there's some more questions in regards, not only to this item, but any more items in the finance, the finance report that we're discussing.
I answer, Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas, if you have the right to change the plan and do whatever, but then it will not be started this summer, it would need, you would need to approve this in order for the contractors to order materials and stuff to start July, in July. If this is not the plan, and that's your decision, then you'll wait another year or so till you redraw the plan, and then we go out for bid again, and we do the same thing again that we did now.
Thank you.
All right, so let's, let me ask a question regarding bids and proposals. I have, I have something in item 16, approve a contract for $90,500 with Tio Management Corporation asbestos, that is over $90,000 a bid.
That was a bid.
Yes, that was a bid.
And that's coming off.
And.
Because if, without the building, you don't need to remove the asbestos.
Oh, okay. If, if, we haven't decided yet, so.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We haven't decided. And then, I have in item 17, approve a contract with, no, not that one, what is it? Here. Approve a contract amount of $89,300 with Encore System for Education, Media P Air, based on RFP received February 16. My question goes as follows. Who authorized these RFQs? And why we will not know that an RFQ was sent out to proposals? I don't think that in my communications I receive any information of us looking for an RFQ for number 19, page 37. Isn't, isn't something that is expected from, from the district that we can communicate this, or we should be the ones authorizing RFQs to be commenced out there?
I believe this right here is the one where we're changing the computer program, right?
My question is about the RFQ. Apparently, there is an RFQ already received and ready to be approved. When did we ask for an RFQ? RFP, 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 I'm sorry, RFP.
Request for proposal.
Yeah, yes. When did we ask for it?
You discussed, you've been discussing this for months now. In order for us to go to the new Encore system, we had to do an RFP for it. You can't just, you can't just go out and say we want Encore.
Correct. Have this board been informed that the RFP was going to be, to be sent out there?
No, I'm not aware of a policy or a request that before, before all RFPs are put in the paper that the board would want to know. If that is the request going forward, yes, but previous conversations, this has never come up, that the board would want to be informed every time that we do this. So that's part of the ongoing conversation.
And the reason I ask this question, and I'll thank you, Dr. Hazleton, for that information, is because we.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't have any, that was.
Okay. The reason I ask this question is because we, we received some information about procurement, and what things that, things that we need to know, and things that we need to do. I spent 54 minutes watching the video, and there are some important information, but it is said in the video, there are some step levels where our purchasing officers should follow when they are bids and contracts. And the highest level out there for us, as the government body to approve, is anything over $44,000, okay? And this is an RFQ that is going over $89,000. And while I am not necessarily unhappy that we've been proactive, I think that, as I said before, the way that the district has been working in prior years is not the way. is not the way that this board expected this to maintain us informed. So I'm going to kindly request that any bids or any RFPs that are to be sent, the board be informed at least to know that something is happening out there in the district. It is not, it's not the forum to discuss, to discuss particular scenarios, but we cannot be surprised when anybody is saying, "Hey, what's happening with this?" When we don't even know that an RFP has been asked over there.
Just if I can interject for just one second. I just, I also think it's just good, good policy. It might not be the policy right now. I understand that. But I think it's a more efficient way to go about it. I mean, if you see the RFQ before it goes out, and we're asking for something that might not be totally in line with your vision, right? I mean, we just talked about, right, having some different ideas about renovations to a, to a school building. It just makes sense maybe for the board to see it first and everyone to sort of be okay that this, yes, this is exactly what we're looking for before we have people submit proposals. And then we reject them because it's not quite what we were looking for.
So are you recommending that we put a policy in place that states that?
Yeah, I mean, if that's, it sounds like that's what the board wants. So, yeah, we should put a policy in that, you know, that the board should, I guess, authorize and/or approve RFPs slash RFQs before they go out.
And this is a call for my policy committee. This is a call for my policy committee, for our policy committee. We need to go back to review our policies and create these policies. We can continue to be working on the 1980s with our policies.
But, Mr. Rivas, I know that we have to prepare the RFQs, but I would imagine that when the RFQs come back.
RFPs.
RFP, no, they have Qs and RFPs. Either one. When they are returned, they are supposed to be opened in the committee meeting. Like, for example, if it's a finance RFQ.
No, so your RF
RFP and RFQ.
Your RFP? Again, I represent a number of different boards. Some boards, we call them RFQs, some we call them RFPs. So pardon me if I juxtapose those two terms. But they'll have a notice when they're returnable, right? When your bids or your proposals have to come back, and they're to be opened right then and there, right? To ensure that there's, it's about transparency and ensuring that there's no bid rigging.
Yeah, but who, when, and the different boards I'm on, when you get the RFPs or the RFQs, they're held in the sealed envelopes, and then it is all opened in front of a committee. Like, for example, the Finance Committee or the
It's opened publicly at the time that they're returnable. Now, if you as a board member want to be present for that, you can work with Ms. Gaylord to pick a time when you're available. We can make it returnable at that time so you can see it. But no, you have to open them at that time. And then I'm sure she does a charting, breaking down what, exactly what the proposal is, the costs.
And I'm sure she has been doing that because she invited us to open the bid
Yes. And I had them all at the Finance Committee meeting.
Now, my, my concern, because another question is, why only the bid and not the other ones? Because we can be invited to the other ones as well. Because if we don't know when they're coming in and we don't know that the RFP is out there, we will not even know when to be there. So that's, I will ask the district to please follow through it. I have another question. Item 21, page 37. Approve the summer food service program contract renewal addendum with Pontonian. Food service operation from June 24th to July 28th. Now, my question goes as this. We are ready to approve year contracts of vendors. It is one thing that I know for a fact. The food in our schools is not the best. Children have said that. How can we look forward to correct this issue? Is any way that we can, we can look forward to correct this issue?
We can raise the price of lunches.
So
It's $2 and something a lunch.
So the food that we're offering is low quality because we are keeping it cheap?
I mean, I don't, I don't think we would like to characterize the food. The food that we're offering is low quality. But, I mean, you
All right, so
Certainly, there's a, there is a cost, a cost component to every bid, right? I mean, we have a budget.
I, you know what? I totally understand. Counselor, thank you for the clarification. But board members, we should do something about it. And that's the reason why I sent all of you an email to one, to ask who wants to be part of a special committee that I'm going to form starting today into July first to go over our vendor contracts and for all of you to provide recommendations and look over everything that's out there. There are things that can better. There are things that they can be ribbed. And maybe we can look for better, better contracts of vendors out there. So I received the request of two of you. And if anybody else today wants to be added to that committee, it's going to be a committee that is going to be doing part of the finance job committee and part of the personnel committee. But it's needed because we need to pay attention to what vendors out there. We cannot just come into a meeting to ask us to approve things first without even knowing it. And second, without even knowing, what options do we have there?
Is this the curve of summer school?
Yes.
Okay, so yet this would
No, no, no. I just use the item to make sure that this is just for July. But perhaps the other options out there that we can look at, what can we do? There are things that we need to pay attention and not saying anything about the quality of the food of our schools. I think we need to revise what is offered out there. For the people who have children in the school district, you will understand. For all of you who have children in the school district, you will understand. Okay, anybody else have any other question?
Yes, I do have one more.
Go ahead, sir.
We're number 14, since we already have, believe it or not, we already have this mark. Can we say, table that with the pending new writing or new No, so it will have to go out
On that particular item. If you want to change it, then you have to have an architect, doesn't have to be that architect, any architect you want, redo the plans to your liking, and then we'll go out for bid again.
Okay. I'm good.
Any other questions? You know, ladies and gentlemen, there is, there are things that I want you to understand. I have had conversations with many of the board members, and we do read the agendas. Every item on the agenda, we do read them. So I am in shock of the difference between the meetings now and the meetings when I started in the board. And believe me, there are many differences, but there are reasons for it. We want to make sure that we make the right decisions for everything that we do. So, yes, let me go back to the same question. And I think, may I ask this question to Ms. Cleary? For the people who were not in the, in the committee meeting for finance, we asked at that date to come in and give us a reason about the difference between Encore's and Genesis. Can you please provide some, some information for them? They are about to make a vote on it.
Yes, yes, Mr. Rivas. Genesis is our current student information system. We have had this in districts since 2005. Currently, it is housed on two of our district servers. And that's how we operate it, and that's how we store all of the data in it. What has happened is that over time, really, Genesis is just a data storage. It's not a system that is able to manipulate student data and be able to give us reports on student data. So what it's doing is, also, it's an older system, and it's been built in multiple layers. So with those multiple layers, there are multiple links that a teacher, administrator, or secretary has to go through in order to get information. So it's very difficult also to extrapolate information from when we have to do state reports. And it's a series of reports that we have to spend man-hours creating our own reports to get that data that we need. Encore is a student information system that is up to date. It's a cloud-based system. So therefore, we would not have to house our servers that we currently have. The servers that we have, it is estimated just over $21,000 of cost for manning those servers, for the resources, and someone to monitor those servers. Since Encore is cloud-based, it's more secure than the district server. If anything happens with that, if it goes down, then we cannot get into Genesis if anything happens to that. It's also compliant with all of New Jersey state monitoring. They were born out of New Jersey schools, this company. So they understand and they stay up to date with all of our New Jersey NJ Smart reporting, any state reports that are due. So they make it easily accessible for you to gather that data when we have to do our student counts in October for our state aid and things like that. It's personalized student dashboards. Our teachers currently use Encore for small components. The lesson planner is one of them. All of their lesson plans are generated through Encore. And our curriculum builder, we house our curriculum on that, so it's connected. So the dashboard would be the same. It's user-friendly. It's more personalized. And there's many more features that also make it parent-friendly. Parents can easily, it's automated. If a parent forgets their password, it's automatically generated. It doesn't have to be sent to an email to someone else. All of the grade reporting is automatic. Right now, currently, our teachers have to put all of their grades in manually in order to the Genesis system to generate report cards. With Encore, they keep their grade book. Those grades are automatically extracted based in real time, and parents can see that as well and what the students are doing in those grades. They also have a master scheduling component. And through that component, it is just much more streamlined than the current system we have as well through Genesis, just to make it easier for course selections for students and for manipulating classes and any conflicts that are within classes and being able to see schedules. And, and I think that's it. Currently, Genesis, right now, the cost for a yearly subscription to Genesis is approximately $48,000 a year, just over $48,000 a year, plus we have the cost of the servers, which is just over $21,000. That's a total of almost $69,000. The subscription fee for Encore is that same amount. I think it's maybe $800 more per year, the subscription. I think it's 69, 800 or something like that. But I know the number you have in your, I'm sorry, the number you have in the, I lost the page.
$89,000.
Yes, $89,000. And the reason why it's more is because that first year, if we implement it, we have to do the implementation fee. So in other words, we have to move all our data over. We have to work with our project managers. We have to get it all set up.
I believe it was worth to, to get modernized, although we have used Genesis for so many years. May I ask, what is the plans as far as parents' education? How to use the system? Teachers' education, how to use the system? What is the plan involving order to everybody get trained in this new system? Because I, since 2005, and I know that 12 years, whoever started is already out of a school system, okay? But there's still some parents that may be concerned. Oh, I just probably got the hang of it, and now I'm going to start something new. So what are the plans?
Right. So that's part of the professional development fee. So what would happen is we would train district staff and district techs, and we would present that to parents. If we, if we can start this, if this is approved, they will start that implementation process with us immediately. I mean, I, we could probably be on the phone with them next week to start our changeover and what we need to do. This way, we're ready. So there is training even at the end of the year for our teachers. And then we can do it over the summer and the beginning of the year for parents as well.
Thank you. I, I think it might work to try it modernization. If anybody thinks different, I would certainly respect that. Questions? And I'm sorry if I go back, but I have a question regarding the RFPs and the bids. Is this a function of a business administrator or the purchasing officer?
I am the purchasing officer.
Okay. We assigned you as a purchasing officer last year. When will the assignment will end? Like, it's a year basis assignment?
Part of my, it will end on June, July 1st, June 30th.
July 1st. Is this part of a tenure position? The bid, the
Have to be certified and qualified.
No, no. What I'm saying is, have you been tenured as a purchasing officer?
Yes, I am.
Did the board tenure you on that particular item in any session?
Well, they appointed me for the last, I don't know how many years, as qualified purchasing agent.
But they have not been
Resolutions.
But they have me being not resolution of tenure? Can the councilor tell us when the tenure applies in this?
The board doesn't grant tenure per se, right? The board reappoints, and if you hold a position for a certain amount of years, you have tenure in that position. It can only be removed for cause.
I, I understand that purchasing officers are not tenure positions.
My experience is that purchasing office, purchasing officer is not tenured position. But again, this is a personnel matter that I think if you want to have discussion
I was trying to go through the, through the
I'll say this. If a person, if a person has tenure in performing certain duties, you, under the law, might be able to reassign those duties, but you can, you cannot reduce them in any sort of salary or compensation.
Understood.
If they have tenure.
Understood. Thank you. All right. Any more questions before we can ask the chairman of the committee to submit the vote? I'd like to ask the chairman of the Finance Committee that, and every, every one of the board members, in the event you are planning to say no to number 14, and this is something that I learned from Ms. Gaylord, number 16 should not apply. So you have to make sure that, I believe
You vote now on both of them.
14 and 16 go together.
Right.
14 and 16 go together. And chairman?
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education. I would ask if that number is one through 13?
25.
One through 25. And respectfully, I ask for a second.
Second.
Do somebody second?
Yes.
Oh, okay. We have a motion in place being seconded. Any discussion before we continue with the, with the voting? No discussion. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
I'm going to say yes to numbers. I'll say yes to everything except for items number 14 and 16.
Is no or abstain?
I said no.
Dr. Berghammer?
I say yes to everything and no to 14 and 16.
Ms. Centron?
I say yes to everything and no to 14 and 16.
Mr. De La Cruz?
I say yes to everything and no to 14 and 16.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes to everything, no to 14 and 16.
Mr. Rivas?
And I concur with my board members, yes on everything, no on 14 and 16. Thank you, board members. Let's continue with our agenda.
Did you vote? I voted. Okay. I was first up.
All right. Continue with our agenda. We go to Buildings, Grounds, and Security Report.
Okay. We have nothing of concern. Let me just glance again. Everything is pretty good. It's just, we're looking for the approvals of basic use of the buildings. Okay, so the Buildings, Grounds. Well, I don't know if anybody has questions first before I go after.
We can do it under discussion.
We can do it under discussion. Okay, copy that. The Buildings and Grounds and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the business administrator board secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board for approval, number one through number seven.
Second.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor being second. Any discussions or questions before we go to voting? With no discussion, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming? Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Having gone through three of four committees, being a personal committee in the next one, I would like to ask for motion to go over to executive session.
Motion to go into executive session?
Second.
There is a motion on the floor to go with executive session, being second, any discussion? No discussion. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Members of the public, we're going to go into executive session, and we're going to return to a meeting as soon as we can. Thank you. Waiting. You should imagine that every one of our meetings take longer because we go in details of every item, and today was not the exception, and especially because we're holding two meetings in one. So the discussions are to be longer in order to analyze every one item of the agenda. I have been advised that the personal agenda has been passed and given to the public. So before we continue, I'd like to ask for motion to return to public meeting.
I make the motion to reopen the meeting.
Second.
There's any discussion before we continue with a roll call? Roll call to return to public meeting, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. And I'd like to now ask the chairman of the personnel committee to present the agenda, the discussion, and vote.
Personnel committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I'm asking for a motion to, can I, can I go with number thirty?
Yeah, so you go one through thirty-three and then thirty-five.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through thirty-three and thirty-five through forty-eight. And I'm asking for a second.
That nurse, remove that.
So I believe you have to...
Before you get a second, there's one more we got, yeah?
Yeah.
I would second the motion.
Hold on, before we get a second.
It's number five, item three.
To remove the nurse. Okay, so.
There was a, a position, a person that decided not to accept the...
Position.
The position, and that is item five, number three.
So Ms. Thomas moved one through thirty-three and with, and then thirty-five through forty-eight. But on number five, it's one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Correct?
Correct. Just remove three.
That is the motion. Okay. Person who seconds?
I did.
Okay. Before we go to voting, is any discussion about a personal agenda? While we, we cannot discuss in public, I would like to motion to table item thirty-four.
Just didn't.
Stand on. You don't have to table it.
She didn't move it. So it's on the agenda. So everybody has the agenda, so.
She only moved, she was specific. She said one through thirty-three and then thirty-five through forty-eight.
All right, so is that, I just want to make sure that we're in the proper way, because every, the agenda was out with item thirty-four, but she only asked for one to thirty-three and thirty-five.
She didn't, she didn't move thirty-four. There's no motion that I go off for thirty-four.
Okay. So with that said, board members, we're ready to vote. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
I would like to move forward with items one through four. And for item number five, I'd like to not vote on number three because it was removed, but also I'm going to say no to items four and five of question, I mean of item number five. And also, no to item number eight, and yes to the remaining.
Is that no to all of four?
No.
No, 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 no.
Four and five.
Four and five of item number five.
In five?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
So yes on everything but five, four and five, and then eight.
Yes. Okay. And eight. Okay.
Seven, eight.
All in five.
Item number seven, eight.
Okay. Sorry. Dr. Berghammer?
All right. I, item one to forty-eight, I approve with the exception of item number five, four and five, number seven, item number eight.
All right. I understood five.
Item number five, four and five.
Numbers four and five, correct?
Yes. Seven, item number eight.
Number seven and number eight, okay.
Seven and eight. Okay. Seven is, okay.
Seven and eight. Okay?
You mean number, are you looking at number seven and eight?
Who's next?
Ms. Centron?
Yes to everything except for number five, four, and five, and number eight.
Do you ask? Mr. De La Cruz?
Okay, yes to everything except number five, number four and five, and then number eight.
Ms. Fleming?
Yes to one through thirty-three, thirty-five through forty-eight, no on number eight.
Mr. Rivas?
I will say yes on, on everything that has been motion except for five, four, items four and five, and item number eight.
So five, four and, five, four and five?
Five, four and five, no, and item number eight.
And number eight does not carry.
Everything, yeah.
Everything else carries.
Everything else with those three, yeah.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, board members. And now we continue with our agenda with, just go look at, I have so many papers now that I lost. I should know this by heart, but...
Page forty-two, Mr. Rivas.
Forty-three? Where is my page forty-three?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
I don't have it. I lost it somewhere. Maybe I lost it somewhere. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to continue with new and unfinished business. Any board members who would like to go in new and unfinished business? The only thing that I wanted to add in this part is that I will be assigning this new committee in order to go over vendors and the appointment of vendors for next year and some of the contracts that we are going to be discussing in the following meetings throughout the year. Now we go to board member comments, and I would like to start with this side of the room.
I have no comment.
No comments, okay? This side of the room, Ms. Malaysia Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. I'll keep it short. I just want to congratulate the athletics department, the swim team, soccer team, basketball team. I'd also like to thank all of our schools in the district and the entire London community for your efforts in supporting Ukraine during these devastating times. I'd like to send my condolences and prayers to the Masters family. I'd also like to congratulate the retirees. Enjoy your retirement. I'm also glad to see the kickoff of the mentor programs here in our district because it is truly needed. I'd also like to just say that there are so many rumors out here, so many things that are being said about the board's reputation. It just kind of gives a false narrative of the work that my colleagues and I have been doing since we've taken oath in being here. I, I just want you all to know that we are focusing on growing the district in more ways than one, from grading, from test scores, from the safety and security, from contract negotiations. There are many different things that some people may be aware of or unaware of that we're really working hard on. So I'll just say rumors are rumors. Let's just believe the data when we see the good things happening and us moving our district forward. I say that we need to continue to adapt to change because we all have had to do it at some point. So let's just keep doing that and leaving the aggression at home. And I'll end it by saying, well, one more thing. Thank you, Ms. Kafalas, for sending the video for redefining pretty. I hope that we can get this on the website. Ms. Kafalas had sent out a video on YouTube of redefining pretty with this student in fourth and fifth grade at School Ten. It was really nice to see. It's really important that we empower our young women and to let them know that they are loved, beautiful, and worthy. And I'll end it by saying that our children are always first. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Centron?
Good evening, all. I would like to thank everyone who has joined us here tonight and who has stayed with us. My main goal as a new board member is to be an agent of change. I want what's best for the citizens of Linden, especially the students and staff members. If I can make a difference in our school system, I will. We do hear the concerns of the public and take them into consideration during our meetings. We will keep striving to do our best for the members of our community. This morning, I was invited to attend an event celebrating the local Linden ladies. It was held at school number nine. There was a beautiful presentation about girl power from several pre-K and fourth graders. We also received a warm welcome from Antoinette Modrock and her, and other faculty and staff members. The students had read aloud their reports on inspiring women, and they were also informative visual displays. I felt a sense of responsibility as a board member to make sure that these children get the best education possible. I wear many hats, but my first priority are my children. I can relate to concerned parents in this school system. We want our children to do well and succeed in life. Lastly, I leave you with a quote from our former First Lady, Michelle Obama. "You may not always have a comfortable life, and you will not always be able to solve all of the world's problems at once, but don't ever underestimate the importance you can have because history has shown us that courage can be contagious and hope can take on a life of its own." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Centron. Mr. De La Cruz?
I want to thank everybody for staying here this late. It's almost 12 o'clock, and I know people got to get to work in the morning, so thank you. My condolences goes out to the Laura Masters family. Never easy to lose a close family member. And our congratulations to our retirements, very well deserved. And congrats to the swim team, soccer team, basketball team. Well, we had three of them, and Jersey City only had one, St. Peter's, but it's okay. We didn't get the national spotlight, but we got it. We'll give you the national spotlight. And also, the awareness of what's going on around the world in Ukraine and us stepping up to the plate, letting our kids know. To have my son that's been on a project for the past four days, probably coloring a page to turn in, and he's still coloring, so I don't know when he's going to finish. Okay? Also, ladies and gentlemen, once again, if we are listening to the news, it's not only Linden that's in a shortage of teachers. It's nationwide, okay? And there's not a shortage of jobs out there. Well, there is a shortage, no, no shortage of jobs, I'm sorry. It's late. No shortage of jobs. There's a lot of jobs out there. People might be jumping ship from teaching to go to another profession, okay? I've interviewed for the airlines. I've interviewed a lot of teachers, and then I try to recruit them, but I can't recruit them, so. They, they're changing careers, so it's not only Linden, it's not only decisions we're making. You cannot keep on blaming your Board of Education, you cannot keep on blaming us. After this COVID, a lot of things have changed, and there's a lot of jobs out there. So people may be jumping ship, it's not the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. De La Cruz. Dr. Berghammer?
Good night, everyone. It's getting really, really late, and I know for all you guys out there, we are not here because we... Good night to the people of Linden. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you, Dr. Berghammer. It certainly has been a long meeting, and that is the common denominator of meetings. And even though many of us have said, how do we make it shorter? We continue not to find the formula. There's not a formula out there. Ladies and gentlemen, it's not that we do not hear the public, it's just there's so many things that the public does not know and is terribly oblivious of what the circumstances are. We hear you, and we respect what you said, but that doesn't, doesn't necessarily means that we're not doing a job that we're committed to do. We're committed to do a job, and I'm going to say it on my own, because I have children on the district, because I want the best education for them, and I would like for them to learn on the schools. We got great teachers out there. We got great people, and everything that they do, many, anything that I hear that one person may do, a lot of other peoples do. We cannot discourage the job of many of the teachers and administrators and people that in the district that do that job. I'm hearing that we are destroying people. I'm hearing that we are taking the wrong decisions. I'm hearing that we are not caring about our children. I can't go battle with any of you who may think that, but I can only tell you that this board inherited many wrongdoings that they were trying to change. And if that is going to take us long, and if that's going to take us to do decisions that it might not be like by our, our district, by our citizens, by parents, by some of our students, at the end of the day, when the things are changing, or they will change because we were looking for change, only then people can really try to understand what the reasons are. This board is not so, not solely committed on doing the best decision, but it's committed to provide our teachers on the district with the best tools and, and items that they can have out there to do the job. We heard our LEA president saying how difficult it was for us to get a memorandum of agreement about the new negotiations, and I'm glad that we did. And he is as a witness. We were for the teachers and for the district. We went out there to fix things that they were not fixed before, and we were out there to make sure that Linden as a district, would it be applicable for teachers to come in and teach our childrens in Linden? But there is still a lot of things to do. There's still a lot of other things to do. And please, understand that we cannot make things happen from one day and another, from one month to another. Linden District needs to be reorganized. We need to change things as the way they have been working throughout the years, and that is something that this board is engaged on trying to do, but it doesn't take one day. It doesn't take one month. It doesn't take one meeting, one session, five hours of discussion. It takes a long time. It's hard for me, as I always say, to be the end person giving my comments, because my colleague members have already congratulated everyone in our district, and I like to echo on the congratulations, and I like to echo on the condolences to the families of our, of the person who died in our, who worked for a district. I'd like to say that the Linden High Student Body is seeking your help for supporting Ukraine. For many of you, there's a lot of Ukraine families in our city, there's a lot of Ukraine children in our city, and they are suffering from the, what's happening in their urgent country, Ukraine, due to the attacks. School number eight had a fundraising, and I think they have finished, and now the Linden High School Body is seeking for help in supporting Ukraine. They're looking for first aid items, non-perishable food items, clothing and other items, as well as women and children's items in order to donate. The world is changing. COVID showed us that we were not prepared, as we thought that we were, to look back and said, what have we been doing? And we may not be the perfect people that you expect to be here, making decisions that is going to make all of you happy. I'm hearing many of you coming in to tell us your comments and your position, and I said, if only you would have known everything that we know, you may have a different opinion out of it. This is the fifth month that I have seen people come into the podium, asking us, why do we ask about development of our children? The development for our teachers? We don't want to take any development of our teachers away. What we ask is to have a process so everyone who wants to be developed out there could have the opportunity to do so. And the great information that our teacher from IT gave, came and gave us to us, it would be lovely to hear it from the district, so we can be informed of what's happening out there, we can recognize people like our... We can recognize people like our teacher who came in to say, this is what I do, and this is what I get there. Congratulations. You may be one of many or one of few that do that. We're sending 30, 40, 50 people, administrators and anybody else to development. That is okay. We want that to happen. But we have been told that there is a process on it, and it has not yet been shown to us. How can we you like not to ask? How will the people think that we cannot discuss item on the agenda when we came into a meeting once a month, twice a month, or with a committee meeting situations? We need to hire more teachers. We need to hire more people that will help us with security. We need to hire more people that help us with the emotional learning of our children. We need to hire more people that will need for them to get them ready for college. And yes, we need to go back and look, what are the things that may have been taking off that are really needed out there? Out there because, yeah, there is a shortage. There is a shortage of people with vocational and technical jobs. But we cannot do this from one day to another. There's conversations, there is requirements, there are processes that we have to complete. We might not be perfect, but I'm going to assure you that I can sleep with no issues at night because every time I come here to do my roles and responsibilities of what I do it with my heart on the hand, knowing that the decisions that we're going to take are the best decision for our children, believe it or not. Because I'm making those decisions for my children. My children who are in the district. If you have childrens on the district, you will understand the same frustration that many of our members have said when you have to help your child trying to get an equation, a math problem out there, and you go into the situation and, this is not exactly what I learned. This is not exactly how do I get the answer? And although we get to the answer, and thank God for Google, for many have they said, okay? There is a very much difficulty for a lot of parents out there. So imagine so in our district demographics with people that may not speak English. Have you stopped for a moment to talk, to think about that? And we have been pushing for changing the demographics of our hiring in our district in order to make sure that we serve those students. But people cannot expect to bring us an agenda and from one day another make a decision without knowing if it's the right or the wrong thing. I'm not trying to challenge our constituents. I'm not trying to challenge the parents. I'm not trying to challenge the teachers. All I wanted to say, all of you, is that we hear it month after month that you may not like our decisions, but I can assure you, none of these people have an agenda more than looking for the best for the district. Thank you. Have a good night. And at this time, I'd like to ask anybody for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
And I second it.
There is a motion on the floor being second. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes, thank you. Meeting adjourned.